Ready to get everybody going here. So if you guys look up on the screen, we had the procedures.
The backup.
Thank you, Daniel. Put it back, please. And we'll get rolling here pretty quick here. Okay, so the hearing procedures are up on the screen there. We'll do the pledge allegiance, everybody can look at those while we do introductions. So it's 5:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're in the Bonner County Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. We're in the third floor of... Okay, Daniel? Okay, so today is November 4th, 2021. We're 5:30, like we said. We're located in the first, in the third floor conference room of the Bonner County Administration Building, 1500 Highway 2. Sam, if you want to... Everybody would stand and will say the pledge allegiance. The flag is in this corner over here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So being this is live on TV, we all need to be courteous to each other. So I'd appreciate that. And hearing procedures are up, we're up on the wall. At this time, I'd like to have the commissioners introduce themselves and start with Kevin from my right, please.
Commissioner Kevin Hatcher, resident here for...
Yeah, but you want the one that shows the...
Commissioner Glaso.
Mr. Davis.
Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Frankenbach.
And Commissioner Bailey as acting chair. Does anybody in the audience need hearing or speaking devices this evening? Okay, we're all good there? Well, we can only have so many people in this room. And so if you, if you're here for the second file, you guys can stay out there and we'll call you in if there's a problem.
This is the file.
Okay. Do we have a full call on? We have staff here. We have Bill Wilson from the Prosecutor's Office for our legal information tonight, if need be. And did everybody look at the consult agenda? The minutes from last week? There was no problems? Okay. So, okay, let's see into the old business. Do we have any changes in the agenda? No, okay. We don't have any announcements for now. So when we've done the consult agenda, I've sent that off. Okay, so it's 5:33. Our first file is file CUP 0019-21, Conditional Use Permit Water Distribution System. Gerald and Patricia Lewis are requesting a conditional use permit to bring a water distribution and sampling facility up to compliance and expand its service. The 15.29 acre parcel is owned suburban. The project is located off Bottle Bay Road, Section 2, Township 56 North Range 2 West Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? Okay. Hearing none, would staff present the file, please?
Thank you. Chad Chambers for the record. Thank you, commissioners, for being here tonight. It's nice seeing new faces, too. And members of the public, thank you for being here. We appreciate you attending and your participation. So tonight, we're here to discuss a unconditional use permit for a water distribution and sampling facility. It's located off of Bottle Bay Road, which is a county-owned and maintained road in Section 2, Township 56 North Range 2 West. This is a summary of the project, as well as the site plan that the applicant had submitted. They're asking to kind of expand the existing services on the property that have been in existence for about 75 years now and in compliance with the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality for the application. And again, Bottle Bay, county-owned and maintained road. This is a, a site map showing kind of the environmental characteristics on the property. And it is, appears to be split zoned between the transition and rural residential comprehensive land use plan, as well as split zoned suburban and rural five acre. There are some map slopes on the property. As we can see by looking at the yellow, that's between 15 to 29% grade. There is a mapped riverine that runs through kind of the northeast part of the property. And intermittent stream that kind of follows that mapped riverine. And, and it doesn't front a lake. There's one soil type on the property, pondare silt loam. It's not characterized as prime farmland, and it is well drained. We had Jason Johnson, our certified floodplain manager, review this for floodplain. And for his review, it's in Zone X, which means that it's, I think it's 1%, 1 in 500-year chance of a flood occurring. Broadly speaking, though, if you're not within Zone A or AE, you're not within the, the general floodplain, where it's a 1 in 100-year risk. There was no further floodplain review required for this proposal, because we're not looking at a building location permit today. We're looking at a conditional use permit. And so the, the waters that currently serves the, the area, the facility is Mountain Springs Water Corporation. We'll see here in a moment. They were one of the folks who commented on the file. The applicant indicated that no sewage was involved and/or on, you know, serves on the property. So there's no septic system or anything of that nature. Served by the Sagal and/or now the Selkirk Fire District. It's powered by Avista. It's in Bonner School District 84. And that was a, sorry, I should explain that. That's a vicinity map, kind of showing the surrounding properties they labeled for us. So these were the standards we used to review the file, the Bonner County Revised Code. We routed the file for comment on October 5th to the following agencies we can see on screen here. Received some comments back. Bonner County Road and Bridge said they had no concerns regarding the conditional use permit proposal. Mountain Springs Water Corporation, which provides water to the property, said, "No problems, go for it." Fishing Games said they don't have any comments to submit for the application. And as of October 15th, the time in which the staff report was prepared, we have not received any public comment. I have gone back to the file to check, and that is still the case, no public comments for this file. So in kind of reviewing the standards, now, public utility facility is conditionally allowed in both suburban and rural five acre zoning districts. And we reviewed it for performance standard for all uses. The existing use and proposed expansion of the water distribution system, or sampling system, was reviewed for the above standards, as we can see here. And we didn't see, staff didn't see anything that, you know, spoke to objectionable noise, glare, light, pollution, fire hazards, et cetera. Again, they've been in operation for 75 years. Indicated to me when they came in person that they've never had a complaint on the property. Parking standards, we didn't see any parking standards in the revised code in relation to public utility facilities. However, per the site plan, there's one parking space provided just for general maintenance. No advertising was proposed in terms of signage for the property. Again, just kind of looking at expanding the existing use. Landscape and screening standards don't apply per the use that they fall under. In reviewing the comprehensive land use plan, you know, one of the things we always look for when we look at a project is, is it consistent with the comprehensive land use plan? And staff did find that it was consistent with both the transition and the rural residential comprehensive land use plan. And again, kind of looking at how long this facility's been in, in current use for 75 years. It's got a pretty established use there. And so as a result of that, the, you know, the existing use, the no public comments, any objections to this, we didn't see. And, you know, I think the, the request for, for this conditional use permit is reasonable and should be granted approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission today. And as a result, staff is recommending approval. There are some conditions that were added to this. However, once the, this PowerPoint hasn't been updated to reflect those conditions, so I just want to make sure I read those off so the Planning and Zoning Commission and, and for the public to hear. So one of the conditions of approval, and this is in the staff report, and it was published one week prior to this hearing, is Condition A1 would be that the use shall be developed and operated in accordance with the approved site plan. They can't deviate from that site plan. They'd like to expand upon this facility in the future. They would need to come back for a modification of that conditional use permit, which would require a public hearing again. The conditional use permit shall not supersede deed restrictions. That's pretty much a standardized condition that we have on all conditional use permits, that they don't supersede those deed restrictions. County setbacks must be met for any new buildings that are placed on the property. And that the conditional use permit will expire within two years if it's not issued. And so that means that all these conditions must be met. And obviously, tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission would have to approve of this in order for it to be issued and notarized and recorded. At this time, I can take any questions.
Questions for staff? Is there an applicant here? Are the applicants represented, like to speak tonight?
No, I'm just, we provide water at night.
Sir, you'll need to come up and, and name and address for the record.
Oh, I have no comment.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, thank you. Okay, so he's done with that. We're fine, so we can... All right, so the applicant has nothing to say. That's good. We don't have any other questions for Daniel, so we'll move on to...
Chad, just chat.
Chad, excuse me. Move on to a public comment. Is there anybody on the internet, Daniel? Okay, anybody in the audience like to comment? Okay, good thing. So we'll close that and open it up for commissioners' deliberations and a motion, please. Nope.
I find it suitable and appropriate to upgrade.
I agree.
Yes, ma'am?
Commissioner Reed, I'd like to make a motion to approve this project filed CUP 0019-21 to permit the existing use and expansion of a water testing and distribution site, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code, as enumerated in the Boeing Decisions of Law, based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at the hearing. I freely move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions law set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draw written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This section does not resolve in taking private property.
Commissioner Reed has made a motion to approve CUP 0019-21, Conditional Use Permit Water Distribution System Gerald and Patricia Lewis. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Kevin Hatcher, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. So we're going to move on to our next file. You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, that was not possible to hear.
So you have to speak up if you can read it next time. The mics are on, aren't they?
Yeah, maybe move it closer.
Yeah, we'll move it closer. Okay, so we're going to move on to this next file. And no comment till it's your turn. Okay, so it's just so we're all on the same page here. Okay, so our next file is Zone Change 0034-21, Zone Change Request from AF20 to AF10. Phil and Carol Sellers are requesting a zone change from AF20 to AF10. This 20-acre parcel is located off Bear Paw Road in Section 17, Township 57 North Range 5 West Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? Okay, hearing none, would staff present the project, please?
Thank you. Thanks again for everyone for being here tonight, commissioners and the public. Chad Chambers, again for the record. I'm filling in for Jacob Gabel, who wrote the staff report and prepared it. I'll be presenting on his behalf tonight. So today, we're here to discuss a zone change from agricultural forestry 20 acre to agricultural forestry 10 acre. The property is located off of Bear Paw Road in Section 17, Township 57 North Range 5 West. So again, applicants requesting a zone change from agricultural forestry 20 acre to agricultural forestry 10 acre. Here's the site plan, one of the site plans of a sending map, rather, that the applicant had provided. A Bear Paw Road is a county-owned and maintained road. So the current land use, it's in the Ag Forest Land Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It's zoned agricultural forestry 20 acre. There were no map slopes on the property between 15 to 29% grade and 30% grade and above. So anything below 15% is not going to be on this map. There was some freshwater emergent wetlands on the property, as we can see here, as well as a perennial creek that runs through it, however, does not front a lake. So there's two soil types on the property. As we can see, kind of by the light brown there, that is the farmland of statewide importance, prime farmland of statewide importance, which is well drained. That's in the Z family soils. And then the Boulder Creek family, which is kind of shown by the purple there, is considered not prime farmland and is also well drained. Again, Jason Johnson, our certified floodplain manager, reviewed this for, you know, being in the floodplain. And it was found to kind of be in a mixed Zone X and A, which, you know, again, is indicative of, you know, kind of a mix between that 1 in 500 years and 1 in 100-year chance. However, since the application is for a zone change and not for a building location permit, this time, no further floodplain review was required for the file. So this is another site plan submitted by the applicant, prepared by Glahy and Associates. Services on site include individual well, onsite drain field. It's served by the West Pondare Fire District, powered by Northern Lights, and it's in Bonner School District 83. These were the applicable standards we used to review the file. We routed the file for comment on the 5th to the following agencies. Received a couple of comments back. Fishing Games said they do not have any comments to submit for this application. Panhandle Health District, you know, broadly speaking, indicated that they were aware of one septic system being on the property, but not a second one. And I think that the applicant wrote in the application that they anticipate having two onsite eventually. But they just wanted to point that out. And, and the fact that the wetlands on the property on the western side may be a bit of a challenge in, as it relates to setting up another septic system. DEQ, we kind of got a general comment from them. They like to send a generic comment to us quite often. And it is basically a five-page handbook of, hey, look at these environmental, you know, review this based on these environmental review standards. But they didn't, they didn't give us a comment on this project-specific basis, essentially. We received a variety of public comments. And just to summarize for the Planning and Zoning Commissioners tonight, you know, there are a variety of concerns based on the staff report that I've reviewed. Water table drawdown, and loss of agricultural and/or forest. Can it be covered? Unwanted traffic, increased noise, light glare, air pollution, uncontrolled wildfire, wildfires, and shrinking wild, shrinking animal habitat. So again, kind of going over this agricultural forestry zoning district. First, just broadly speaking, I'll just read this verbatim. So the Agricultural Forestry District is established to provide for agricultural and forestry pursuits, including livestock production, forestry, horticulture, floriculture, viticulture, and necessary accessory uses for treating, storing, and processing agricultural products. The purpose of the AF, or Agricultural Forestry District, is to preserve, protect, and maintain areas that are rule and character and the integrity of the forest woodland areas where viable agricultural pursuits can be feasible and to avoid fragmentation of forests and farms. These purposes are accomplished by, one, establishing residential density limits and conservation development standards to retain areas sized for efficient farming; and, two, to allow for uses related to agricultural production and limiting non-agricultural uses to these compatible with agriculture or requiring close proximity for the support of agriculture. So in kind of looking at this distinction between the agricultural forestry 20 acre zoning district and the agricultural forestry 10 acre district is the AF20 Zone, short for Agricultural Forestry Zone, and is characterized by primag soils, agricultural and/or forestry pursuits, and also in areas where the following apply. So steeper slopes, 30% grade or greater, where access may be absent to substandard systems. Large tracts of lands may be devoted, devoted, rather, to agricultural forest land production. Then the AF10 Zone, you know, basically does not feature those primag forests, or sorry, primag soils. And, but still, where agricultural and forestry pursuits remain viable. And then again, kind of looking at this, that afforded fire protection, I think that's a key here, access to standard roads, Bear Paw Road being a county-owned and maintained road, and other services. And so the property was in the Ag Forest Land 1020 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And so requesting a zone, a zone change from AF20 to AF10 is consistent with that comprehensive land use plan, because it allows both of those zoning districts to be within it. For context, I kind of wanted to throw up a higher resolution image for the commissioners to kind of get a look at the lay of the land and what the property looks like. I believe this was taken in April of 2019. Don't quote me on that, though. So based on the analysis, staff did conclude that the request from the zone change from agricultural forestry 20 acre to agricultural forestry 10 acre was consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code, based upon the following. Majority of the property contains soils that are characterized as not prime farmland. And I think Jacob notes in his staff report that only 2.3 acres of the total 20 is, is considered, has that soil type considered as a prime farmland of statewide importance. The property's afforded fire protection by the West Pondare Fire District, powered by Northern Lights. There's power to the property. It's accessed by Bear Paw Road, which is county-owned and maintained. It's neither adjacent nor within an area of city impact. And it better aligns, and as a result of all these characteristics of the property, it better aligns to the agricultural 10 acre zoning district. And so as a result of that, staff is recommending approval today. At this time, I can take any questions from the... Yes?
Recognize that it's not called current form.
Okay, let the record reflect this farmland of statewide importance. And commissioners, I can take any questions when you're ready.
Yeah, could you please bring up the county zoning map for us?
Let me see, just one moment here. Just going to share the screen here. Yeah, yeah, I'm there. I'm just, was pulling it up, so that one is right. Okay, so here is the property. And let me just, sorry, the Zoom is in my way. Here we go. One moment here, we're just waiting for the... So this is the property right here. We do have some agricultural forestry 10 acre here. But broadly speaking, around it is, is AF20.
And I assume that's state land or something to the north, or...
I believe so. U.S. government land.
Triangle is as well.
It was considered prime farming land.
We'll get there in a minute, sir. There are no questions until we're, you'll have your, your chance.
Also, U.S. government land.
And the lighter color down there to the right, that's AF10.
That's AF10.
Can you pan out just a little bit more? Because I know we've got some 40s, quite a few 40s in there. Thank you.
And so there's that. So if you would put the slope... So, and I know we've asked this question before. This was owned at the present zoning in 2008.
Unfortunately, I don't have the correct answer for that.
That's when it was...
AF20, okay.
And the code, as far as the zone descriptions, has not changed since 2008. So, and of course, I know the answer to this, but are there any notes in the file as to why all of that 20 was designated 20? Of course not. Yeah, that's, that's where I was going. Because it doesn't, as the staff pointed out, I'm kind of in deliberation now, but anyway. That's what I was saying, I'll leave it there.
Yeah.
I'll leave it there. The answer to my question was, oh, there's nothing in the file that explains why this and the others were designated the way they are. I have a question for Chad. Which soils report refers to statewide? Because the reports I've seen from the 40s to the 80s, statewide importance is not used.
Zoom out a little bit more. So all this brown here is all farmland of statewide importance. Ideology as well.
But...
Which follows...
Are you, are you getting the statewide? If the wording is not in the soils, statewide important, what soils report I have read, unless I...
In the staff report?
No, no. In our soils report that we base everything on. Okay. County USDA Soil Survey.
Yeah, that's interesting, because this should be from, this should be from the USDA Soil Survey itself.
From the 83 report. Okay. Yeah, there's the, there's the soil numbers.
If you were to click on it, it would pull up. That's, that's the definition.
Yeah, there it is. It says farmland of statewide importance.
That's out of 83.
Well, it doesn't cite it, but yes, that's, that's where all these. That's what the basis of this map is. That's the same map that you find in the document.
Set digitized.
Okay. That was my only question. Any further questions, staff? Okay, is the project representative here this evening? Hey, sir. Then Chad, when we're done, we'll need to move the mic to the center aisle, please.
Hi, I'm Travis Heiler. I'm with Glahy Professional Land Surveyors. 303 Trick Street, Sandpoint.
Yeah.
Chad's pulling that up. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Chad. Thank you to the county planning department. Thanks to Jake for putting this staff report together. So Milton, the G drive, did we download it? Into the Google, into the Google drives from here. Okay, okay. Yep, I will. Can't download as a PowerPoint. Can you just open up that PDF? PDF that I had opened?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm, I have it open. It's just, it's a, yeah, the formatting is a little off. Sounds good. Okay. All right. Like I said, I'm Travis with Glahy. I'm here representing Phil and Carol Sellers, property owners there in the, in the audience. They're here tonight. Um. So kind of a. Blow it up. Get a reference for where it is pretty much within the county. You got Sandpoint, you got Priest River and then going up highway 57 there and then off Bear Paw. And that little tiny red, that's our 20 acre parcel we're talking about. And that gray line is the state line. Um, so the comp preemptive land use. That's the table, but. You see here. The dark green is your primag forest land and the bright green is the. The regular ag forest lane and that distinction is the 20 acres because. If we go back up. You can see here the ag forest land is 10 to 20 acres and the prime ag is 20 or above. So. There's that, but if we look at the zoning. You can see just, just, just colors wise, they don't match, right? So we have half and we fall, our property falls within this extra coloring. Right within the cop land use. And whereas here. Now all of a sudden we're in the prime ag forest. Excuse me, the ag forest 20, this is the zoning and the ag forest 10. So what we have here is the cop plan says, hey, you're good for a 10 acre minimum. The zoning does not meet that though. That's why we're only requesting a zone change here and not a cop plan amendment as well. So that's one thing to note. When we rezone, when we request these rezones, we're just rezoning that parcel. We're not rezoning the valley. We're not rezoning anything else. It's just that 20 acres. So if somebody else wanted to go down to 10 acre minimums and they're zoned like we currently are the ag forest 20. They have to go through the same procedure. So I read some of the comments that this will open the floodgates kind of stuff. I get that mentality, but that's incorrect. This doesn't open. Everybody else has to go through the same thing. So if this does get recommended for approval. And then ultimately approved, it'll just be for that parcel. And it's 20 acres will create one extra. So. When Phil and Carol came to Glahy and were wondering if they could split their lot. I'll let him talk about the purposes and reasons why they want to do that. But as a planner, one of the things we look at are the criteria that the county has in their code, you know? Does he meet a prime ag forest land? Does he not have it? Does he have steep slope? Does he not? Where is this property? And does it meet the criteria? And so that's what Chad and Jake, the report put together, did a really good job on. So if we look through here. It's not highlighted, but Chad spelled it out, but I, I want to point it out. So this is taken directly from the county code and this is the ag forest district. And it spells out the criteria. And this first A and B spells out what is for ag forest 20. Right? And that's where we get the prime ag forest soils. That's where we get. The steep slopes. Deep slopes, I know you're in here. Characterized by steep slopers than 30%. And we also get the roads access meet maybe absent or limited substandard road systems. So that's what we're talking about, but then here, this is the only really big thing. Is AF 10, what we were trying to go into, it talks about the primag soils not being on the property where the forestry. Ag forest pursuits still remain. And also the steep slopes, we don't have them. It goes into fire protection and services for that land. And so when they came to us, yeah, you, you actually fall into the ag forest 10 perfectly. A lot more so with all these things. So we can go through the topography where we know it's flat out there. The soils. As Chad pointed out that we have the two soil types, the Z family, the Lacustrine plains. And we have the Border Creek family. The Border Creek makes up the majority. You can kind of see it there. Sorry for the setup here. It got kind of wonky. But about 80% is what I calculated of their property is non prime farmland. So all these criteria. That the county has set forth, we, we fall under the ag forest 10 much more than the ag forest 20. So. We see this a lot that. These are just the criteria and stuff set forth. And I know a bunch of you are here tonight to say you guys don't want it. Um, I understand that. But if we're going to want that, we need to change the code. So in conclusion, the site does is consistent with the cop plan. It falls within the ag forest 10 a lot better. And. There's a nice little table that's color coded that shows exactly going from the current proposed to the proposed. It's just a summary of what I said in a nice color coded table. Um. The things I'll, I'll just address them now. We'll have the floor. A lot of the comments addressed things like the county doesn't want it. The cop plan already has it in it. So that right there is the big overall plan. That's the 10 year plan. And we meet that. So to say that. Is inconsistent. The roads, the roads are always an issue. Especially with Bonner County, we have all these roads, dirt gravel. Increase in traffic. Unfortunately, it's again, it's not a criteria that really is set forth. Verbatim, it says substandard roads versus, you know, maintain roads. Bear paw is a county owned, county maintained road. I don't know any other way to say it. I addressed the opening of the floodgates. Again, everything is addressed on an individual basis. So. Yeah, I, I don't know any other way of saying it that ag forest 10 is perfect for this parcel. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. The applicant, you said he wanted to address the.
Yeah.
Commission. He can, he can dress from the center aisle is fine. Okay. So Phil Sellers, want to come up and address the commission, please?
My name is Phil Sellers. My wife and Carol and I. I'd like to. Explain who we are and what we.
That's fine.
What we want to do. We both grew up in rural communities. In conservative Christian homes with conservative values. We believe strongly in family. We don't smoke, drink, we don't. Crouse, I, you know, we're, we're good salt of the earth kind of people. And I. We moved to the city to education and careers. I retired a year ago, but several years prior to that, I, we were looking at moving from there to a rural community. We looked at Idaho because we have family and friends here in Bonner County specifically. And. In our search, we discovered that we kind of narrowed it down over a period of months. Because we did a lot of research. We went on acrevalue.com and came to realize that much of. Upper Bonner County especially is taken up with. Federal government land, state land, private timber company land. There's not a lot of buildable land, a very limited amount in fact. And the area that we looked at, which we really wanted. There was very little. The property we found was not even on the market yet. I talked to a realtor, she about another property and she said, oh, we're just gonna. We have pending offer on that, but I have another one I'm going to list next week. And so we did, we jumped on that really quickly and we were fortunate, very fortunate and blessed to be able to buy that. I retired and we, within three days, we had, we had already sold our house. We moved here. We're staying with friends, family right now. And building. It's taken a long time because the. COVID has really reduced supplies. It's reduced, I mean, it's vastly increased the. Building materials. And of course, land prices were already high. And our budget is being swallowed up by that. So our dream is. We're trying to hold on to that. We love this area where we're building. That valley is gorgeous at all times of the year. We look forward to meeting all the neighbors around us. But we've been out of the area for the most part, living up in Kulin. And doing some work there, but not on a daily basis. The property, as you saw on the map, showed. An area that was. Past year, you could say, we call it Meadow, which showed floodplain as almost that entire area. Although we had Tom Dubinov come out, who's a respected and acknowledged wetlands expert. To remap that and he probably took it down to a third of what the. Corps of Engineers map showed. I'm not saying we're going to build on that. I have no intention of doing that. Our building site is actually back in the woods and you saw that there was a cleared area. Probably half an acre or so cleared that we're planning to build. So. Our building site is not visible from the road. On Bear Paw Road. The property that we're proposing to divide is actually to the east of us. There is a old logging road that goes to the north. That 608 acres of federal land to the north of us. That would be an easement going back to the rear of the property where the. Our proposed sale site is. For us to realize our dream that we've had for many years, and I know many people in this room. Have that same dream to live in a beautiful area, quiet, rural. They may or may not be building at this time and hopefully they aren't because building materials are still way high. It's going to take us. A long time to build and if we do not have opportunity to sell this property. We may not be able to build or finish. We're not building a house. We're building an apartment in a big shop, 40 by 80. That's all we can really afford. We're not going to live in a tent. But. We, we realize our dream has to be pared down to make it realistic. And without the sale of this property, we will not be able to. Finish even that. So thank you for your time. Thank you for all the interest that's here. I. Really know there's a great interest in the community of this area and there should be because it is one of the most beautiful areas. In all of this Bonner County and we have looked and looked and looked. Over the years, we've been up here a number of times. We looked online. We've taken, you know, online video, not video, but. Mapping and things like that. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions to the applicant? Okay, any questions to staff? Okay, so we're going to close that portion. Okay, so we're going to move to. Public comment. And there's a lot of people want to speak. If your neighbor says something you agree with, just stand up, state your name, address and say. I agree with my neighbor. Okay. So you guys got three minutes. Somebody else can yield their three minutes to you. Okay. And we'll, we'll go with the online folks first if there's anybody online. No. Thank you. Okay, so I've got a list of folks, but who wants to speak first? We'll just start, we'll start with you first.
Yes, I'll go first.
Yeah, the list is here, but I'm not going to go off the list. I'm going to go off because folks are going to say I agree or whatever. So we'll just work our way around. Just be courteous, please.
So I'm Leonard Myers. I live at 2321 Bear Paw, Lee Bear Paw, two down from him. So I'm not going to talk about the policies and the governance and all that. I lived on these main boards. I worked on these boards. I will say, sir, I will debate the issue about opening floodgates. Because my neighbor between myself and Mr. Sellers already wants to subdivide his 20 down to 10. He's hoping he wins. So I want to put that out there. There are already people, a few people working on that piece down the road. On the comments, you know, I'm an adult, couple of comments from my daughters. So you know, is what it is, but. So, you know, is what it is. But, uh, most of you people grew up here. I did not. I've been here since June. Came from Louisiana. If I wanted a smaller place to see a bunch of houses, I could have got that. I passed up many houses in Sandpoint and Sable for lesser prices. But I bought this parcel because it's not about the rules. It's about a way of life. Everybody calls it Bear Paw Road, but it's really the Bear Paw. You'll see turkeys, deer, you'll see cattle trains down my road in front of my house. It's, it, that, that's what it's all about. And that's where, when we open the floodgates, that'll go away. I don't want to look out my front door and see tons of houses or to my right or to my left. My daughters love it. My dogs love it. Yeah, they may make noise on occasion, but it's where we go down there. We came to Priest River because Priest River, not that all the towns here are big, but Priest River is a little town. It's a little community that we like. And the Bear Paw is a little community inside of Priest River. It has its challenges like internet and everything else, you know, but it's own little community inside of Priest River. And by the way, Priest River, the whole Priest River and Priest Lake doesn't have the infrastructure to start supporting thousands of more people as things get developed and they explode. So, you know, I just want to say, as we work through, yes, it's important to understand the regulations and I get that. But this is about changing a way of life. The Bear Paw is its own little place. You haven't been there? You should come down and visit, you know, and, and that's what needs to be, you know, and I'm sorry, sir. I understand construction concerns. You know, I have a hard time getting a concrete pad laid. I get that. But it's about changing the way of life and I'll yield my 40 seconds to someone else.
All right. Who's next? Who'd like to speak next?
Yeah. Hi. My name is John Nelson. Uh, I live at 2064 Bear Paw Road. My family came in 1938 and they are right. It is a community. And, uh, my opinion is it's farmland. It's farm. That's what it is. And if we let people walk in and cut it up, it isn't that anymore. He, the gentleman said he's too old to take care of 20 acres. Well, uh, how about the next guy that might want to try? They can't because he walks in and takes 20 acres and cuts it in half. How about the next citizen that wants to farm? Now we can't. The, uh, I got the Freedom of Information Act here. And some of the gush in here was unbelievable. This property will help promote the growth of Priest River community by, by providing more affordable housing and also housing to bring economic growth. Well, I thought a house on 20 acres was worth, what, a hundred thousand these days? No, it isn't. How is a house on two 20 acre plots affordable for a person in Priest River? Just take a county worker. How the heck can he do that? That isn't affordable, is it? Uh, oh, that's another one here. Get nervous, guys. Uh, yeah, I guess that's just about it. It's just I, I don't see how you can walk into the middle of ranch country farmland and cut it up. No one else will have the opportunity in the future. Try to buy that. You, in order for someone to try to ranch that property, they'd have to buy two. Boy, real affordable. It's anything but. Thank you.
Who's next? Okay, sir.
I'm a little nervous too, because I never speak in front of people. Gary Mickelson, I live at 392 Bear Paw Road. I have 165 acres there. I've lived at my present location for 53 years. My family moved there in the thirties. And these guys that are moving in now, they move in, first thing they want to do is change the codes. Make it smaller. When I moved there, it was five acres. Then they changed it, rezoned it to 10 and now it's 20. Why did they do that? Does anybody have an answer? It was trying to keep the population down. They've ruined it, ruined it up there. And if you allow this, who's to say the next one comes along? I decided to divide my 160 acres into 10 acre plots. What's that, 16? Yeah. There's 16 more wells, 16 more septic systems. And I don't understand all your codes with the farmland and the soil and all that stuff. What it amounts to is just people wanting to move in and change things. And we've had enough change. All this used to be farmland, ranchland. It was open grazing. It was for as long as I could remember. And there's been enough people already move in that they did away with the grazing. It's no more. So the farmers that had cattle have had to cut back. And if they keep going down to 10 acres, then what will the next one be? Five acres again? That's, we don't need it. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
My name is Lon Shook and I live at 436 Johnson Cut Off Road. And so this gentleman's property backs up to mine. So I share a lot line with him. And my neighbor lives at 550 Johnson Cut Off Road. And, uh, my neighbors are, are Nancy and, uh, and Darren Stafford. They're not able to be here tonight because she has been admitted into the hospital. I have his permission to speak for them. Okay? So we both share the rear lot line with this gentleman. And as I listen to his story, what's interesting, it's exactly my story. Okay. I came here last year. I just retired. I came from Seattle. Okay. I came here for all the reasons he did. And I'm sorry that the financial things aren't working out for him. Okay. But, uh, I'm in the same position. Okay? And so will other people. Okay. But we're not going to destroy, we don't want to destroy why we came here. Right? I saw this happen in Seattle. Okay. That's what brought me here because my hometown got carved up into urban sprawl. And what was beautiful about it was ruined. Okay? And if you listen to his, what he wants to do and why he wants to do it, it's all about him. It's not about the community. It's not about how it's going to impact other people or other families. It's all about him and his dream. And in trying to fulfill his dream, he's going to be ruining the dream of other people. When I came here, I bought a piece of property. I didn't try to rezone it or change it. I have financial problems too. I'm building a, a shop with a mother-in-law apartment, just like him, because that's all I can afford. But guess what? I got to save my money for several years. I got to do it incrementally to be able to afford it, but I would rather do that.
Everybody turn off their phones, please.
I would, I would rather do that. Okay. Then, then try to change the community in my own self-interest. I saw the self-interest in Seattle where I live, the community where I live, turn into urban sprawl and they ruined it. Okay. And I am asking those of you that sit on this council tonight, tonight to deny this request. Okay. There's nothing here that is in the community interest. All the people you see here are here because we have a community. Okay. And we, and we want it preserved.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Who's next? Go ahead, sir.
My name is Jeff Emmert. I live at 287 Rop Road. I bought my 140 acres from John Nelson and his sister three years ago. One of the very first questions they asked me, are you a developer? Do you want to subdivide? I said, no. I want to reestablish this as a working farm. That was my first and foremost goal. I've seen a lot of people come up. They want to buy land. 20 acre ag. I knew the rules when I came here. There wasn't anything I was interested in changing. Not interested in changing it now. I'm also a licensed complex septic installer. The classes and stuff that I took, the tests that I took, it requires me to be a good steward of the land to install these septic systems with the greatest of integrity. What we have up there is an ecosystem that you don't find very many places. And I'm sorry to disagree with these folks that's from surveying offices and that. I go by the property that's in question every day. I see ducks in the wetlands. They're there almost all year round. It is a very fragile ecosystem. The pollution from all the septic systems starting to bind us into 10 acre tracts. That runoff sheds right down to Priest River. Pollutes Columbia Gorge, backs up, pollutes Lake Pond Ray. We came originally from Montana. Montana only cared about their minerals and stuff themselves. They polluted the Flathead and the Clark Fork, which sent the heavy metals down to Pond Ray. They dredged that almost 10 years ago, said they cleaned it up. It's an impossible feat. So talk about your ecosystem, your fishing, your water. We had Sloth Creek on the back of our property go dry this summer because of the drought. To my knowledge, all the neighbors now have said, that creek's never gone dry. I was worried maybe somebody diverted it, but it absolutely went dry until the rains came. So the added impact of breaking everything down to 10 acre tracts and that, you're putting more strain on the aquifer. Sure, we get rain, but we're also adding pollution. Doesn't matter how you sum it up. It's not good for the area. Bear Paw is a community. Everybody wants our farming way of life up there. So thank you, sir.
Who's next? I'd like to speak. Thank you, sir.
I'm Alan Galloway, 434 Snow Creek Road, just off of Bear Paw. I can see the property from where I live. It used to be my sister-in-law's. It used to be their family's ranch in the seventies. I came here in 1974, actually 73 earlier. I have cattle in the area. My cattle are the ones you've seen on the roads there. We've got cattle at Jeff Emmert's, at Gary Mickelson's and others. About 75 head, including calves right now. I have a dream to keep that going. I've got grandkids, 13 of them. I'm working out outside as I build up the herd and get sales going. I just barely made it here off, after working for city service delivering propane. Uh, we want to keep that the same. It is a fallacy to say that this isn't a stepping stone to the next breakdown in the size. It's just wrong. We can see it. That used to be 80 acres, that piece. Now it's down. Can I ask a question on the propane question? I heard there are two wells there.
He's shaking his head no.
One well?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That was a rumor. I, I'm glad you confirmed it. Okay. All right. This is a pretty good turnout here and I think every block on that sheet is marked as opposed. And, uh, we want to keep this this way. It's unfortunate. There are sad stories in every life. I work day, night and day, keeping up with what I, with what my dream is. And I'm 65 and I'm not quitting. I'm going to keep going. I've taken care of my health. I'm in good shape. I follow my cattle on the road, walking. And we're not going to, we're going to fight this. And we just, we heard another property, 120 acres was just sold to a developer just up the road from this north. And I don't know what their plans are. I don't know if they've gotten some green light from the county here that, hey, the code's changing or the, or the rules, you said the code allows for this. How can we change that code? Can we change that code? We, we the people, right? We're in charge here. Maybe we need to work on that. Get that code changed back to where this opening isn't here anymore. What would it take to change the code?
You would have to talk to that gentleman right there after the meeting.
Okay.
You have time, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Who's next? Go ahead. That's right.
Evening. My name is Garrett Powell. I live at 218 Lucas Lane. I, uh, own the property adjacent across the road from, uh, the property we're discussing. Um, my wife's family, my wife was born on a place where third generation there, uh, her great, her grandfather homesteaded the place back in the early seventies, late sixties. We purchased 20 acres from my in-laws, um, knowing that there is owned for 20 acres. So the original ranch was 80. We subdivided down to 20. Cause we, my wife does have other siblings that but will end up, uh, buying out there, but, uh, potentially. Um, but we get it. It's 20 acres. It's what, what the rule is. So my wife grew up there. I've where we've got a real young family. I've got a two-year-old daughter, almost two. We're trying to give her the same life that my wife got to enjoy growing up there in the valley. I mean, it's, it's legacy ranch. We're trying to sustain that. We farmed the place and, uh, we're, we're dreading this change. I mean, I'm, I'm one of the younger people out here that own, I mean, I'm only 28, but, uh, we're wanting to, to maintain that same, same core values that most of the neighbors here are saying. I am, I, I do feel for, for the, the folks, I mean, that I mean, financial burden is, is rough. I mean, we're holding off on building right now as well, just due to the fact that, uh, it is expensive. I get that. Um, I am nervous about the floodgates opening. I mean, like, as, as said before, the comment, I mean, because, uh, my wife's great aunt owns a large farm in front of ours. Um, and what's to happen with that? I don't know when she's gone. Um, or somebody purchased a developer and then that's, that's right out my front door, right? Hayfield. I don't want, I don't want to see our valley turn into multiple valleys that here in the county that were all agricultural land at one time. And, uh, now most are subdivided out and multiple buildings and Sully Valley is one of them. Um, I really wouldn't. We've got a very good treasure up there and I would like to see that, that be maintained so I can pass it on to my children. I'll yield my time.
All right. Good mechanic too. Still work for Caterpillar? All right. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nita McGee at 612 Go Away and my, our property kind of faces the, um, parcel that they're talking about. And, uh, we have 134 acres of pasture and timberland. Um, and we bought it knowing what the rules were and that the parcel, that the land was not going to change radically from what it is today. Um, because of those rules. So, um, I'm sorry for the guys that keep saying that it doesn't open floodgates, but it does set a precedent. We've seen that in history, you know, as soon as, and, and he even brought that up in the map. He said, well, see, these were 10 acre parcels. Well, he, so he's already referencing, well, see, they're already 10 acres. So therefore I can turn this one into 10. Um, so I, I don't agree with the, the proposal and I would like to yield the rest of my time to him. So, I, I don't agree with the, the proposal, and I would like to yield the rest of my time to him.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Rick McGee. I live at 612 Go Away. Yes, we love that street name. We do 134 acres. I also farm that land. I also go ahead and also take care of the hay with Duane around the area. There's a couple of points I wanted to go ahead and bring on up. First, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are here to go ahead and listen. But I'm hoping you're going to help preserve our way of life, because that's what we all have there. But the thing that I'm really disappointed in is that the staff turned around and failed to go ahead and mention the fact that I own also ID 61, which is an airport. I'm the only light at the airport, basically, in that area for, basically for medical emergencies. My flight path is directly over this property. Okay? Now, I know this county takes grant 21 funds for basically for going in and do it since they just redid the runway. Under those provisions and those, and those rules, okay? We're supposed to protect these open spaces. We're supposed to protect and not have residential growth or anything along those lines at the end of runways. We don't get a lot of traffic, but it is available in case people need it for emergencies, especially medical emergencies, which is what that airport is great for. And I am a pilot too. The other point I wanted to bring on up is that, yes, Bear Paw may be county maintaining, but still a Snow Creek, but I can tell you that the county does not maintain Snow Creek. I do with my snowplow. The county has shut their duties and Steve has not come around and done the job that they're supposed to do. So, I ended up plowing a good section of that, that road to go ahead and keep it open. So, if we're looking at all the things that the county has, and then again, this is part of our rural area and our wonderful life, I don't mind doing it. What I do concern, concerned about is that we're going to be adding this additional traffic. We're going to be adding these additional people that realistically may want the same life that the rest of us have, okay? But they're going to have to wait till we all die off one at a time, you know, and decide to go that way. And I think part of that is that we do have to go ahead and maintain it. So, they, they didn't check with the FAA as, on any of the requests to go and do it, which is required for grant 21 funds, or what their thoughts were about going in, having any type of development at the end of my, my approach. And by the way, I do come over that, at times at less than 150 feet when the clouds are in. So, be aware that, I mean, that that is fairly close to the ground. And that's going to level their windows pretty good. I don't think that they realize that, you know, as we go ahead and coming and out of there. But, and I also feel, feel for them. I understand that they, they do have a financial burden, but they also knew within, when they purchased here, they were purchasing 20 acres. They also knew that this development, that they weren't supposed to go ahead and actually go for splitting. And if this is how they're going to make their money, this is the wrong place to do it. And perhaps this is not the right area for them. And I feel fond in that way. But I do appreciate your time, and I appreciate you guys going ahead and considering it. We want to continue with our farm land. We want to continue with what we have. We don't want it changed. We don't want to go ahead and see it cut up. And I know a lot of people are trying to put land back together right now, trying to get back into large ranches, because there just isn't a lot of different areas to go ahead and do this. And it also cuts into my hay production. By the way, last year was a terrible year. Yeah, so, you know, we all had a bad year last year, but we're all here. We all, you know, we all take, take it. And I, I guess that's my main point, is that help preserve our, our way of life, please. Don't allow this to go on through. Don't set a precedent. Let us stay with the 20 acres that we're supposed to be. And I think that's small enough as it is, because believe me, if you get any smart, I can't get my smartphone in there. Okay? It, it just doesn't work, and you know, we know that in some of the things. So, please. Thank you.
To answer your question about the FAA, with Dave, the county only sends letters out to taxing districts. And being that the FAA is not a taxing district, that's why they weren't.
Okay, they usually though on grant 21 funds, so usually request and have an input directly to that.
These guys downstairs, they might not know anything about that, so, in any way, that's why they weren't coming.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is George Garrick. I live at 294 Rincon. I don't live in this beautiful place that you guys do, but I, I do acknowledge that we live in a incredibly diverse and beautiful ecosystem. I would like you to pull up the critical habitat map, please. And while you're doing that, I, I don't want that to erode into my time.
Yes, it was straight. No, this is public comment to us, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let, let the record reflect that as part of this process, you guys didn't automatically pull up the critical habitat map. The critical habitat map that was written in 2002 and is extremely outdated. Let the record also reflect that I emailed Milton to ask him whether or not surrounding counties, any county is relying on a map that is 20 years old. And he did not know, and he didn't seem to particularly be interested in it. I would also, by the time of the next meeting, I hope to find out the local company that did this. I would want to know from them whether or not they felt a work product that was 20 years old was something that you guys should be relying on to make decisions about habitat in this ecosystem. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Corky Cook. We live at, my wife and I live at 3885 Bear Paw. I'd just like to say, from the sounds of it, you would be a great neighbor. From the, from the sound of it, this gentleman would be a great neighbor. But, we all did our due diligence, the folks that moved out that way. We all, if we bought a piece of property, we did our due diligence. And we chose that area because, my wife and I chose that area because of the zoning. Population densities, you've heard everything, and we agree with everybody that's opposed this. And I think my point is to change that for, basically for a financial situation would be absolutely terrible, because we can, we'll have this going on forever. I understand that there's some criteria the gentleman presented. Understand that that's debatable to people that don't agree with it, and I'm one of them. But, like I say, the due diligence thing, we, we have more than just property there. We have a way of life. There's, if, if the property out there was divided into 20 acre parcels, it would be huge on, on the, on the population density there. And that's what it's on now. So, I think a point, what I'm, what I'm trying to say, you probably get it already, you've heard enough of these, is that somebody buys a piece of property, it's owned a certain way. It should stay that way. We have people that could move in and divide up, so along those lines, I think you understand me. Please preserve our way of life there. Anything else from you, Lou?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
So, how long have you lived there?
We've had a property nine years, going on 10.
You, you bought, like you said, you, you did your due diligence, you looked, and the zoning is 20. Were you aware that the county code had the, the descriptions in there that talked about this is what a 20, this is what a 10 is?
Not at the time. Yeah.
I just wonder how many people are aware.
Yeah.
Do that. Zoning, anyway.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, I know, we looked at zoning. We've seen, we've seen the 10 acre parcel zoned areas, and that's absolutely where we did not want to live. And like I say, I think to change a designated zone for financial reasons, and I, I feel for the man, but I don't think that's a proper reason. Thank you, thank you, folks.
Well, they'll have to wait. We're going to finish the room first. Thank you, Swati.
Janet Haggott, 360 Gemini Trail, which is just off of Bear Paw. I just go ditto, 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 ditto to all that's been said, but actually wanted to ask a question. Am I allowed to do that of you guys? Okay, you know, we talked about the Ag 10, Ag 20, and, you know, we came and have 20 acres, and it's, you know, other than our little parcel where we bought, we, we've left it as forest. I love where I live. I chose to live there because it's how it is. Oh, okay. So, we've got the, y'all talked about the Ag 20, Ag 10, and then the fellows presenting talked about it's just not zoned that way. What is, is that, you know, why are they having to get this waiver here today to go to 10?
Chad, would you explain again the difference of the zoning map, the comp plan? You want to go ahead?
Yeah.
Alright, that's fine. Okay, just as long as Chad knows you're going to be called up. Alright, ma'am, we'll get your question answered.
Okay. Thank you, guys. I mean, it's been very educational, and I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I am Jim Tank. Me and my brother own property at the end of Rock Road 556, got 40 acres. And my biggest issue is I have a neighbor right beside me who all of a sudden deeded five acres to somebody. Just like that, out of the blue, deeded five acres, and it went through. So, is this a new trend going around? Because how can that happen? They own 80 acres, I think? And just went ahead and it was a non-relative deeded five acres to her.
We didn't see that, sir, so I can't ask.
So, I mean, doesn't it have to go through somebody that, how do you approve? Because I guess it went to the lawyers and went, and it's approved deal.
Yeah.
No, we'll do it at the end.
You know, so I mean, you know, it's one of those deals where if that's the way of getting around, if, if that's the way of getting around things, what's going to stop people from starting to deed off? You know? I mean, because if, if that happened, I mean, it's right across the road from us. And she's already moved in a little tiny home on this property, and she's got a Conex box, and it's sitting right out in the middle of the field. And she got a creek within, what, 50 feet of her, maybe? You know, a year-round creek. And so, I mean, just, just as one of those things that, is this starting the whole?
We know nothing about that.
Okay, but I'm focused on the fact is that if, if that can happen, and we do 10 acres, there ain't nothing to stop going to five acres. That's all I'm saying. We got 40 back there, it's beautiful, we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
The microphone is not for sound in this group. The microphone is sound for zoom. And so, when you're too close, you're over projecting and what you extend.
Anyone else in the room like to speak? Okay, sir.
So, I was a little bit torn because I've lived here.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry, Will Bozenbark, 643 Bear Paw Road. I was a little bit torn because I was thinking, I've met Phil, he's a good guy, I like him. I like everybody I've met up the Bear Paw. We all have a lot in common. And I was thinking, why should I be the one to say whether somebody can expand up here, move up here, change things, and, you know, everybody, you know, it's just the way the world works. But I feel like I owe it to the community to oppose this because of the way things are currently. I don't want to be a problem or, or a reason for the change or the speed of the change. I like to keep it, I know things are going to change, but if we can slow it down as much as possible, and hopefully, the next time this happens, Phil will be on our side and saying, oh, you know, don't let him split that parcel, you know? Don't let him do that. And I guess just what, what we have here is, is a, a great thing, and I feel like, I've, you know, I've only lived here a year, and I really enjoyed it. I like everybody that's here. And I'm part of it, you know, I'm building the house too, and I have kids, and my kids are going to grow up, and they're going to cause more traffic, and, but if I don't say something now, I can't complain about things later on down the road about how things are changing, and they're changing too fast, and property taxes going up, and, and all these different things. So, I just thought I would voice my opinion that I don't think we're, it's, it's not a people issue we're dealing with here. It's a, you know, everybody, everybody's really good people. Phil's a really good guy. Everybody's a good guy, but, or a good person, but it's a population control thing, or just slowing down the change. We know the change is going to happen, but let's just slow it down as much as possible. And if we don't kick back now, we're not going to be able to kick back later. We're not going to be able to give any feedback later. Thanks.
Thank you. Is that it for everybody in the room here?
A little taller. My name is Ashley Kruger. I'm also known as Ashley Stevens Roundtown. And I am a fourth-generation local native here. I reside in 1317 Honeysuckle Avenue. My story is different. I don't reside in Priest River, but I grew up kind of as that, as my stomping grounds with my father. And my husband and I like to go up there as well. I dream of owning farmland. I'm being priced out of my own town. There's a lot of stamp-happy people that we have in our commissions and whatnot. I am very passionate about my community as well. We're being overrun with people, with traffic. I don't think our infrastructure can handle it, and I don't want the same thing to happen for them. And I think they are very scared for that too. What I want to say is stand strong, guys. You guys are awesome. I met some really great people tonight. I am nervous, I don't speak much. But I think that these guys have a really great argument. I think that you guys should really listen to them, and I'm the younger, like, I mean nothing by this, guys, sorry. I'm the younger generation, and I want the dream that they have built. And if you guys keep allowing the subdivisions, where does that leave me and my future and my kids? You know, no farms, no land. And the way the world's going, there may not be any food, you know, to, you know, there's no, no ships. You can't ship it right now. Like, what happens if people keep subdividing, the, the land disappears and they can't grow, you know? Just one of those things, I'm babbling. Like I said, I'm nervous, but I really think that you owe it to these people to deny the proposal. I'm sorry. Maybe this isn't the place for this gentleman to live. You know, it's called the Sandpoint Shuffle or the Idaho Shuffle for a reason. You work hard, you work two jobs, you buy what you want, you live the dream. You might be tired, but hey, you might be able to retire, or, you know, you might die.
Is that it?
Hi, my name is Dorinda Cook. I live at 6084 Bear Paw Road. I've been in the area, born and raised Priest River. The Johnson Road was named after my great aunt Lillian. Peterson Road after my great uncle Howard Peterson. I had two great uncles and a great aunt born on the Bear Paw, on my great grandparents' homestead. I agree with the change, you know, not the change of what it is, people moving in or whatever, but with the allotment. I was here in the seventies. I happened to marry into somebody owning the Bear Paw, so I got to go back up on there when I married my husband about 50 years ago. So, anyway, the, there were subdivisions that started coming up in the seventies, like you said. There was a guy that bought them, and he was going to develop into five acre plots. Us as neighbors, and Gary Mickelson's aunt was a big leader in getting that stopped. Otherwise, we would have had about 200 and some acres from Gary's property up to the church on both sides. We would have ended up with all that subdivided in five acres. We live in God's pocket where we're at, and everybody enjoys it up there. And it's just devastating to think of these beautiful fields that Gary's grandfather, one of your grandfathers, where a lot of these neighbors live at now. Those, Gary's grandfather and his brother came up here, and that whole valley was theirs. So, to watch this be broke down from 20 acres into 10 acres, to see the beautiful fields cut back down, if this happens, because the ladies that have it now, which is Garrett's wife's, their great aunts. that wife's, um, their great aunts, they're in their eighties. How long are they going to be alive? You know, and to watch that be cut down into 10 acres, I mean, it's, we don't want to see that. We want to, we want to see the area the way it is. And of course, there's already 20 acres or 10 acres or whatever. That's fine. It's already zoned in. But for somebody to move into the area, buying a place, knowing they bought the 20 acres, then all of a sudden putting a road in, driveways going off two sides, and wanting to divide that 20 acres into two tens? Zone it, you know, you bought it. That's how you bought it. And I'm sorry, but our area, it's, we love our neighbors. We've got a community like you wouldn't believe. And it, to have more, we've got enough traffic. We do, it is loaded with traffic. But anyway, thank you for your time. Um, I'm just.
Thank you, ma'am. Everybody done now here in this room? Okay, Swati, go ahead and bring whoever's on.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Dave Bowman, 3077 North Cootney Road in the Sally Valley, where we're fighting a similar battle. So uh, let me start by just saying thanks to all you folks from Bear Paw for coming in and, and taking the time to speak, because that's what you need to do to stand up for your rights. Thank you to the P&amp;Z Commission for your time. I know this is going to be a long night. So everybody who's spoken so far has spoken on their own personal level of what's important to them, and that, that, that's all good, and I agree with that 100%. But I want to be, it needs to be known that the code, the code and the comprehensive plan do not support this. So you folks in the room need to know this. So I want to reference back to Travis, who said that the comp plan, the land use map, the comp plan shows 10 to 20 AF. Therefore, it's okay to be AF10. Well, that's, you on the P&amp;Z know this. That's not how the comp plan works. Comp plan is developed by the people in general terms to describe a range of two things that zoning could be in a particular area. It could either be AF10, or it could be AF20. This is zone AF20, and that's the zoning. It, it, it's not a menu system from which you get to come in and choose that, if you can somehow make your land fit this script, and you get to make that zone. It doesn't work that way. So that's number one. I want to read something from the comprehensive plan. I'll try to be brief. But land use planning is an ongoing process aimed at providing a public forum for citizens to effectively determine the future of their communities. Planning is a way to balance the needs of individuals against the needs and desires of the group as a whole. Planning is a way to consider our options before they no longer exist. The future of Bonner County will be told by the decisions we make as residents today. So folks, it's up to you to stay on this. And that's from the concert, comprehensive plan. And then I'll just move on one last thing. Title 12 to 11, from, from the Bonner County uh, zone code, says, "Any applicant who wishes to do a zone change must state in writing why the amendment is necessary, why the zone change is necessary." And necessary means not that you have on, you know, I'm real sorry for this gentleman who's got hard financial problems. Lots of us do. We, it's not everyone else's problem to change a law and change the zoning, and zoning is the law because of your circumstances. We're sorry about that. Anyway, necessary means that there's something wrong in the code. Like, an example would be if your property was split-zone, and they zoned down the middle of it, then you would have to pick one zone or the other, and that's a reason to have a zone change. Anything short of that is not necessary. There's nothing broken in the code here. The code is correct, and it is what it is. So I'm going to put it out there, and it, this application should be denied for legal reasons, not just because people are emotional. And I can understand why they are. I am a little bit, too. So that's it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Swati, was that it for online? That's no more? Okay. All right. Chad, would you explain again the zone and the comprehensive plan map? So that closes public comment now. So there's no more public comment. Chad's going to explain it one more time, and we're going to move to commissioners' deliberations.
So the, the comprehensive plan is a way the county kind of manages and forecasts its growth. And one of the things we've been discussing as we work with Don Davis in the Planning and Zoning Commission, as we work to improve the comprehensive plan and eventually have an update. It's a long, difficult process. We've just started it. In the agricultural forestry, at land 10, 20 acre district, it allows for either agricultural forestry 10-acre zoning or 20-acre zoning. And so when staff reviews an application, we have to go with the zoning ordinance. And that's why ultimately Jacob made the recommendation that he did for approval for this files. We have to go with the zoning code. And so we do take into account the comprehensive plan, but it does allow for that 10-acre zoning. And so looking at the ordinance, ultimately, that's what staff has to make the recommendation-based proposals. I've heard a lot of comments tonight about, you know, changing that. You can apply for a text amendment to the comprehen, or sorry, to the um, to the ordinance. And so that is a process you can go through, and we're more than happy, Milton and I, to discuss that with you after this hearing tonight. I did want to comment while I'm up here about that five-acre piece. Um, we do have a compliance team that investigates a variety of things. We'd like to have a conversation with you after, um, if you feel it's necessary. We do investigate those types of things. We take our zoning code seriously. Um, and so just to cover that briefly, um, at that point, I don't have anything more to say.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to.
We got a rebuttal from.
Travis, did you have anything?
I don't have anything.
I'm sorry, Travis. All right. Sorry, Mr. Travis. That's why I got my backup here. Okay, so we're going to move to commissioners' deliberations and a motion. Excuse me. And you're probably going to want to put the map back.
You were going down a path, and then, did you want to revisit that?
Yeah, I will. I was just waiting for somebody else to say something first, if necessary.
I did, I just did.
Okay. So what I was asking earlier, and it was brought up, uh, two, two or three people mentioned it, the fact that when zoning came in back in the eighties, uh, pretty much the whole county was on five acres. Just the way it was done. And I don't recall, I wasn't here then. I do, I, I had opportunity as a land use consultant in Sandpoint in the late nineties to look back at some of that code and see why it was written, and try to figure out why it was written the way it was. Unfortunately, there's no, no notes left behind as to why things were done the way they were done. It's pretty much just, here it is, here's the code, and the code is what prevails. It's not necessarily the legislative intent behind it that prevails. It's the code. So, but the fact is, whole county was, was five acres. Then in the nineties, there was a second comp plan and zoning effort, and that did a lot of work, a lot of work, huge amount of work with the citizens of the county. And, and so this area was one of them. It probably, I can't recall exactly, but it may have been that it went to tents, or all of it or some of it. Then the next round, in, in 2005, the comprehensive plan was amended again, and there were various things done. A lot of work was done there, too. There were citizen committees all over the county. And then the same in 2008, then the, the code was put in place by ordinance for the zoning. And again, there's no, you can't find this great bank of notes that say why things were done the way they were. It's there in the boxes somewhere in the department, but boy, Travis. And also unfortunately, there's not many of us left around that weathered that whole process and remember it verbatim what happened. But bottom line to me is, there were good discussions held, and almost regardless of the descriptions, in the zoning descriptions, AF10 and AF20, this area was designated 20. There had to be a reason. I, I can't, I can't get past that. And then the, the underpining that are in the comp plan that talk about preservation of farmland, preservation of this, that, and the other, preservation of way of life, it's in the comp plan, 2008, 2005. So it's there, but then you get this very pointed, two-headed description, AF10 and AF20, and it seems to fit AF10. And that's the code. But what about the history? What about all the history that took place over 30 years to get to the point where it was put in 2008? That the decision was made by the county, by the public, that this area, the Bear Paw, should be, or is, the vast majority of it, is 20 acres. I, I just, myself, I can't ignore that. So I don't see, plus the fact, there's been no other zone change out there since then. Right? I don't see of any evidence of one. That area down below to the east is uh, is, is 10. Put that up on the map again, but. You have a very big contiguous area of dark green. Oops, there's one over there, and it's all by itself. And then all that light green, I was trying to bring up the slope map and other. This was not, as I see it, this wasn't willy-nilly discussion or decision. The thing that we see, the thing that we see quite often is, as was mentioned, a split-zone parcel. Okay, what do you want? This one or that one? And that's up to the owner to propose what that would be on a zone change. But the other thing that we commonly do when we have somebody come in and they say, well, you know, it really is descriptions and everything, it really fits this, I would like to go for that. Well, that usually takes a comprehensive plan amendment, the map amendment, because the map says it's this or that. And then the zone change. And we, for the most part, agree with that because of the description, because of the continuity and everything else. Here, myself, I'm not seeing, I don't see that that's the same bearing, the same basis here as in some of the other cases. And I'm, I'm almost have to say, regardless of what that description language is in the code. So it's a, it's a tough one. I, I'm.
This area has historically been farmland, freezing land, hayland. It's always been agriculture, and in my opinion, 20 acre minimum. That's what a lot of it is. I don't want to see it start splitting this stuff up. We're trying to avoid that. We want continuity. And this doesn't, and it doesn't lend itself. And why it can have to be split into two tents? Knowing that property up there, knowing the land, knowing the use. And I think the folks have made very good points tonight. Very good point. And I totally agree.
I mean, I'd also know, if it changed, it would be a little bit of a spot-zone kind of situation. It, it would be a, a spot of AF10 in a, in a, that's separated from the other AF10. If it was adjacent to the other AF10 area, I think there might be a stronger case for it, but, but it's not. Um, so it'd be a little bit of a spot-zone situation in a larger area of AF20. Um, I basically am, I very much agree with Don's comments. It's, it's a tough one. It's a dilemma because the description can be read to fit AF10. On the other hand, those descriptions, I almost always find to be frustratingly ambiguous. Something I hope we can change with a new comp plan and, and then some new, some new zoning code as we work through the comp plan update here. But, um, but I also recognize it was clear that somebody was thinking, this is an area that should be AF20. They looked at the map, that, that's what they were thinking. So.
I want to remind everybody to go back to your conclusions of law, which is what you're going to be basing upon, saying it does not meet the needs. So review those, and then you'll need to change number three because the wording isn't. But that's what we have to. There's a lot of passion behind everything. But you do have to refer to your conclusions of law. You have to show where it fails to mean it. May not be the popularity of the room, but that's where we're drawn to. And then from here, of course, it, it isn't our decision. It goes to the Board of County Commissioners.
Right, this is a zone change, so we make a recommendation to the.
Correct. But we do have to follow a place of procedure.
So, Mr. Chair, to, to remind and educate perhaps some of the newer commission members. The, the decision here is looking at the zoning code between AF20 and AF10, and making a determination based on those standards that are in the code, whether or not this property complies with that. It's already been determined that both of those zones comply with the comprehensive plan. That, that analysis is, I mean, it's, that decision's already been made. That's why there's not a comp plan change here. So you're, you know, in your consideration and deliberations, you need to consider those standards between the AF20 and AF10. And of course, Bill's here to answer further. Yeah, Bill, come on up. Bill is with the Prosecutor's Office. He represents the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, so I think typically, and Milton alluded to this, when you guys see one of these files, sometimes they're accompanied by a comprehensive plan amendment as well. And a lot of the, the arguments that were raised here today really would be targeted at that kind of analysis. What we're going to do, like, how do we want our communities to look going forward? The gentleman here spoke to it. He said, if that's what the law requires, how do we change it? Well, here, we don't have these, these, these hand-in-glove comp plan and zone change proposals. The, the comp plan, as Milton already stated, allows 10s or 20s in this spot. So your, your job, although there's been a lot of discussion about the way they want the community to look, and that's great, that is probably more appropriate for a comp plan discussion. When the zone ordinance allows for one of these two uh, size lots, then the commission's call is to review the criteria for those lots and decide which one fits better. That's, that's the kind of the narrow scope of your your, your job tonight, basically. Because as Milton said, it, either one fits with the comprehensive plan based on the other map. We just know that. For good, bad, or the other, that's just not subject for discussion here. So uh, it does unfortunately mean that some of the, the points that were made here super relevant, probably even political questions that you can raise to your elected officials, and those will be the people who can drive the comp plan change that you want. I don't know that those are criteria that the, that this commission can take into account when either approving or denying this, this, this proposal. Does that, does that help, uh, help understand the context a little?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's plain. The code says what the code says.
The code, that's right. And that, those are the criteria that the planning staff relied on.
Right.
And it is, it's very easy to, to fall back into, you know, is that right for this? For this area? And usually you guys are making that determination as well, because there's that other comprehensive plan amendment to consider. It's just not here tonight.
My point is, the exact same code, the exact same comp plan was in place in 2008. 13 years, nobody has requested a zone change in this area. It's zone 20. The criteria was there, and for whatever reason, the decision was made in 2008 that this area is 20 acres. By this exercise tonight, we're saying that decision was wrong.
Well, you have to look at each application based on its merits.
True.
So if the, if the.
It, it, that's true, but it could be stated, and I don't disagree. Um, if it's stated here that the necessity is because it was wrong before.
And that's, that's what Mr. Bowman, I've heard him make that argument before.
Yeah.
If, if the commission decides that the zoning designation for the lot in question is incorrect. Then the necessity is fixing it so that it reflects the, what the property actually is in real life.
But I, I just can't. I can't imagine that the county commissioners at the time and the public behind them moved out here and, and this should have been ten.
It's impossible to put ourselves back in that situation.
Well, yeah. We, we, we haven't gotten to this point before. Because I think we're looking closer at the comprehensive plan and then the subsequent zoning code. And how it all came together. And I, boy, I wish there were notes from everything in the past that was done this way because.
One, one point I would make is that, you know. When we talk about each parcel having to stand on its own merits. Um, it's not incompreh, it's not out of the, the possible that. There could be a difference between the zoning ordinance that was adopted and the map that eventually became. I mean, those things could happen. That's why we have the process for asking for a zone change in the first place. Um, and. It's, it's there to account for those situations when the original zoning designation was incorrect. Or the, the character of the neighborhood has changed such that, uh, a new zone is appropriate.
Which is, which is then why the complaint gets updated or.
Yes.
Well, to look and see if things have changed or if they should change, are we in a different trend or whatever?
Exactly.
And we're about to do that. But right now, I mean, I'm still, I'm still hung up on the fact that. Back in two thousand eight. All the discussions that went place to take this from the ten that was there then, up to twenty. It was ten.
And, and the analysis that we, that we didn't go into was the, the size of the lots currently surrounded.
Yeah.
Adjacent to, which there are several that are less than twenty acres.
There are.
And so you're right, what was the thinking to some of this twenty acre? And many of the lots in that small section.
Well, and I think during the time that it was ten acres, which was roughly ten years. Some people did that. They actually made it ten acres out of there, as we've heard. These all started out, maybe the whole area up there that was broken out of the forest eons ago, and then it became private property and. Two or three or four people had the whole thing. And then they broke it up.
Some of that was.
They broke it up. Family splits, right? When family splits were regardless of them. You know, which is a problem.
That's a great. It's a great point.
I mean, the. Yeah, and, and so anyway.
The problem, you know, those are. All probably legitimate points. The, the point that I'm making is that when the commission acts tonight. If you, let's, if you were leaning towards denial, then you'd have to articulate.
Why?
Something from the ordinance to, to do that. And that is your discretion. If you've heard something to, tonight from one of the people here commenting on the criteria from the ordinance. And that has swayed your opinion as to why it should be AF twenty instead of ten. Then that's within your discretion. Um, but the things that don't have anything to do with the ordinance are probably not appropriate for that basis.
Those, so if I could, let's try that. So there are three criteria listed in the staff report. For AF twenty, we'll start there. I'm going to deal with the easy ones first. Um, B, are characterized by ag or forestry uses. I think it satisfies that criteria, in my opinion. Um, C. Areas where one or more. I emphasize one or more of the following apply. Limited services, to me, that's ambiguous. Maybe you could argue that given, but maybe not, I don't know. Characterized by slopes steeper than thirty percent, clearly that doesn't apply. Access may be absent or limited to substandard road systems. I think since it's a county maintained road, it's probably hard to make that argument. Or where large, where large tracts of land may be devoted to ag forest production. I, I would argue it satisfies that requirement. This whole area satisfies that requirement. And it's one or more. Now, the fact that it's only one, maybe. Maybe weakens my argument a bit, but, but I think strictly speaking, it probably, I'd argue it satisfies C. Then we come to A, which is, we've debated this one on some other files before, it's the prime ag soils. And. I struggle with this one because, for two reasons. One, it, the soil that, that I talk about is the Z soil. That's farmland of statewide importance. Not really sure what that means, but it sure sounds like prime soils to me in a, in a, at least in a colloquial sense. And I, and I don't know if there's some strict technical definition of prime ag soils that we have to adhere to, but. It sounds like something that's important, but then on the other hand, it is only. Maybe a little over ten percent, fifteen percent of, of the property. On the other hand, that could become. Thirty percent. Of a ten acre lot that's cut out of this, depending on how that's done. You know, so. Then maybe that subsequent lot doesn't fit as well. So that one's. A struggle with that. To me, only A is the one that, I think, I think, I think this property satisfies B and C. Strictly speaking. Um, I don't know, A is, A is a, is a little bit of a stretch, maybe.
Can I interject something here?
Even if I assume that.
I, I just want to say.
You're still on the floor, Bill.
Thank, thank you. I cannot say how much I admire your. Ability to articulate. Your position while you're deliberating. So I'm a neutral in this. I, whether or not it passes or, or does not, um, I, I try to maintain my objectivity. But one thing that I love about this body, and, and I hope that the Board of Commissioners can, can emulate, is just your ability to articulate. And go down the criteria, say why you think it's good or bad. I love that. Um, for each one of you guys, for the newer, uh, members of the commission, that is a great example of wrestling with difficult land use issues. And then making a, a good decision based on the best information you have. And reasonable minds can disagree sometimes on those things. And that's okay. Um, the planning staff has, in their report, addressed those issues. And they determined that they thought it was a better fit in the AF ten. You don't have to go with that. Um, so long as you are able to clearly articulate why you disagree. And you're doing that, and I just want to say, good job.
So, so let me then turn to the AF ten description. And, and there, it's a little bit more categorical about. The primag soil question. It says AF ten is in areas that do not feature primag soils. Um, so if I, if I assume that soils of statewide importance are something we ought to be concerned about and trying to preserve and trying to observe in larger lots where ag is, is possible. Um, in, in AF ten, it's not so much a question of how much is there, it's, they do not feature primag soils.
The, the problem with our, with, with the distinction here is that we, we deal with primags all the time. We do that. This designation, soil of, of state.
Statewide.
Significance.
Importance, yeah.
I, I don't know what the heck that is. It's not in our code.
Not in the county code.
It's not in our code. And the problem we have then is if we hold. It may, it may be synonymous with primags, but, but it's not in our code. And so then, we, again, we go back to the cri, this, the criteria of the ordinance. And we just have to hold the applicant to that. And it says, no primag soil. We, we have something there, but it's not that. It's not primag, it's soil of significance. Farmland of state significant, I can't even remember it.
Statewide. However.
There we go.
The remainder of that.
So that's a problem. Again, we, we keep, it's, it's very easy to. To, to get, to get away from the criteria of the ordinance itself. And that is what you must.
Okay, so.
Constrain your analysis too.
So that doesn't, so therefore the first part of the AF ten, first sentence, um, doesn't hold any weight relative to the soil, but. The but part of that sentence, but where agriculture and forestry pursuits remain viable. Now. We've had this. Debate discussion in the Selly Valley, we've had it here. We've had it at other places around between Priest Lake and Priest River. That. The smaller the parcel, the less viable agricultural pursuits or forestry pursuits are. It's, um, and we've had that testimony here tonight. So even like our, uh, our. Recommendations say. And testimony received at this hearing. Let's say professional testimony, it doesn't say, it just says.
But there are, you can do viable agriculture on smaller parcels. And I want to take you back up to B, under twenty. By agric, it are characterized by agricultural and forestry uses. And that you can't look at the rounding area, you're looking at this parcel because this is the only one in question. And this is not going to have agricultural or, or timber pursuits.
Yeah, and I, I've said this before, I have a huge problem with. Zones, zoning being based on what the current owner decides to do with the property.
Yeah.
It says anybody moves in, decides to do something different, oh, now we're going to change the zone. It makes no sense to me at all.
Then it's.
Sorry.
Be changed, but tonight we aren't changing it. Tonight, we're looking at what we have in front of us. And we have many people who are doing extensive agriculture and immediately neighboring.
And.
We're not looking at those properties, we must focus on this one.
Well, I think in a, most people who own. Ten, twenty acres, I would venture in this area, are going to do some, who have a good bit of trees on their property, which this property does have. Are going to end up, that is going to end up being a timber property, this is a used for forestry. Some point in time.
Probably end up with.
They'll end up with a timber exemption. They're going to do some logging on it.
Timber exemption is five acres.
Five acres, six, six of the house, six of the house.
So.
Okay, so that.
Qualify for that, so that talks about the viability.
Viability, right.
So, but again, it's a. Yeah.
So let's go back to smaller acreage. There is viability in small acreage for, for farming.
There is.
If, if you have irrigation to be able to, to irrigate your crop, whatever you're putting in. We all know we're struggling with the hay crop. We were down to a quarter ton per acre in Selly Valley, which is putting people under for farming hay now. And, uh.
Yeah, that was the same, most areas of the county.
So. You know, we're, we're talking about how we can, you know, continue farming with, with, uh, going to micro irrigation or something like that. If you have water to do it, so. Ten acre parcel. If it was cleared, it could create crops or so.
Chairman, do you have any more questions for me, or can I?
No, Bill, I know you're going to ride a long ride home, so.
Okay. One, but one point before I, um, I sit down. I, I, I heard a mention of spot zoning, and I just want to see if I can clear up a little bit of what. My perspective as an attorney. Um, so just because a pe, a zoning is, looks like a little spot in a larger. Patch of a different zone, doesn't necessarily mean that it is spot zoning. The, the definition of spot that, or the distinction between a good zone change and spot zoning is just this. Does it comply with the comprehensive plan? Um, is spot zoning, um, done for favoritism or something that doesn't satisfy the comprehensive plan? That's what we look for once with spot zoning and what we wanted, we wanted, you know, avoid at all costs. If something happens to satisfy the comprehensive plan and ends up being, um, a spot, so to speak, in a different area. It can, that could be perfectly legal. So just because you see something like this, or there's one color in a, in a, surrounded by others. Don't assume that it's spot zoning, you just have to be. Articulate and deliberate and, and look at that, look at each, again, look at each application on its merits.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe drive home. And for the farmers that are struggling, uh, first of the week. The hemp bill was passed in Idaho down at the. Big legislation, so we don't know what the codes are going to be, but there's a new farming opportunity coming here to the county. If people choose to do so, but it's, it's going to take water, so.
Good.
Okay. Okay. I don't know if you caught that. Okay, alright.
I'm still struggling with the soil question. I don't know what to think. It's, it's hard for me to imagine that something that would be designated farmland of statewide importance wouldn't be something good to grow stuff in.
Except that's not in our.
Yeah.
Our fantasy plan.
It's not explained. Yeah.
Who are you?
Go ahead.
You gonna make a motion?
Um. He's still thinking about the soils.
Yeah. I'm still up in the air.
Change that. Low grow, no grow. Bill, I don't think there's any problems with the next file, so if you want to. Go on, sorry.
I'll wait until this one.
Alright, thank you.
Based on. Dave, what was your? You commented on.
Well, he was looking at the description. The description of AF ten and AF twenty.
Yeah.
So which one do you want?
AF twenty, I mean, I think two of the three characteristics of AF twenty are satisfied. It's ag forest uses, that's B in the staff report. And, and it is, it's in an area where large tracts of land can be devoted to ag forest production. See. A is the primag soils question, which. I know what I want to think about it, but. The words don't fit.
You can't use me like that. Because you can't look at the surrounding area, you can only look at the parcel. And by definition, that's not primary.
Quiet on the issue.
When we look at that parcel, that's the only one you can think of.
But it grows crops, it grows trees, but the soil itself is not designated.
Soil is not prime.
So, yeah.
All right.
We're working on it. Just speak up a little bit.
Yes, okay. Yeah, yes. Now we're, once again, we were just discussing the soils on the site and the fact that they're, they grow crops and trees, but they're not designated as primag.
Right. And I was just reminding that we can only look at this parcel. We cannot look at the surrounding parcels. This is the only parcel that is on the table tonight. This is the one in question. That is our job.
But we know what, what the soils are around that parcel. And this parcel is not going to be different than the soils in that area.
We have analysis, professional analysis that tells you what those soils are.
And that, if you ran it on the parcels around it, could say the same thing, but it's not, it's not accurate.
You've got to look, we have to go with the information provided and the information provided for this parcel. That is unfortunately our unpopular job. We're not going to win Brownie Awards on being on planning and zoning. Okay, take my picture for the dartboard. Commissioner Glasso, I move to recommend the Board of County Commissioners approval of the project file ZC0034-21, zone change from agricultural forestry 20 acres to agricultural forestry 10 acres, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the finding of facts and conclusion law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Commissioners Glasso has made a motion to approve file ZC0034-21 zone change request from AF20 to AF10, Phil and Carol Sellers. Is there a second?
Mr. Hatcher, seconds.
Okay, any, any, with the second, any discussion?
I, I would just make one comment. Doing a little bit of research on the fly here, it does appear that there are three levels, categories of soil, prime, unique, soils of statewide importance. And that's in order of best to, not quite best, to not quite, quite best. So it is, it does seem that statewide importance is, is a distinct category from soils, from primag soils. And since our code is quite clear, I, I think that clarifies that for me. I might wish the complaint was different, but that's the way it is, so.
But in the wording of the code.
It says primag soils.
It doesn't say statewide importance.
No, it says primag soils.
Everybody has to understand that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would that definitely say aye?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays. Okay, motion carries.
Our presence here just before Malley.
No, sir, it wasn't.
Sure, well, you guys just voted against everybody here. And you also didn't take any consideration. Like I said, you're a part of the, violated the code. This is just a recommendation to the board. Violated federal code. Let me present that to you.
So, so the next step, the next step for his information, this was a recommendation by this commission to the Board of County Commissioners.
Rubber stamp, we will make the.
No, it wasn't rubber stamped.
Because you got her sitting there, walking off over there. I'm giving a full discussion to everyone. She's just saying, oh, you guys exactly what you're going to do. Watch the video. Exactly what she did.
She's an elected official.
I am not an elected official.
No, we're not here to debate it. Your file is closed. Your file is closed.
I do not have enough locks on my machines.
Might need a sheriff.
Thank you, one of you guys for your service.
We get a raise?
Oh, yeah, whichever way.
I appreciate it.
Be careful on the way home. It'll be posted, ma'am.
Do we not know?
Um.
We separate.
Yes, we need to take a five minute break. Danielle, take a soft one, please.
Hey there.
Oh.
I gotta go down.
You have to modify the code. People hate you. It starts with woods and rain. How to fix that gate?
Before riffraff down?
I'm sure not, I'm sure not presenting the vote to you too recently.
You know, what people don't understand, if they really thought about.
Milt, you have them put that up there tomorrow. So we can review it for the eighteen.
Just based on what the neighbors. It's got to be based on the law.
Okay, we'll get started in a minute. We just have to wait for one more commissioner. So Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of November 4th is back in session. We're in 1500 Highway 2, Sandpoint, Idaho, third floor conference room. It's 8:55. Our next file is Zone Change 0035-21. Zone change requests from R10 to R5. Richard and Kathy Zetsch are requesting a zone change from R10 to R5. This 19.91 acre parcel is currently split zoned as R5 and R10, the project located off Blue Sky Road, Section 30 Township 56 North, Range 2 West Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest?
No.
Okay, I have one. I contract and neighbor contracts, which is Senator Jim Woodward and I. He's a neighbor. And also, I know one of the guys that work on the piece of property, or live on the piece of property and work for Lippard Escavation. So I'm gonna recluse myself from the file and hand it over to Commissioner Davis.
Okay, thank you. First off, I want to correct the record. It's 7:56 PM.
Did I say 8:56?
You said eight.
And I did look at the phone.
And then we'd be really off on Sunday.
Yeah.
All right. So the file has been explained what it is. And if you recall from the procedures that were up way long time ago tonight up on the screen, the first thing is, there they are. So staff presents, staff report, the applicant and our applicant's representative can present other facts, whatever. And then public testimony, one-time rebuttal, and then we close it and go to deliberation. So if the staff would make the presentation, please.
Thank you, Members of the Commission and public. Thank you for being here. So we are discussing a zone change request on a split zone property. Yes. So we are discussing a zone change on a split zone property that is zone R5 and R10 currently. And the applicant is requesting to change the zone of the entire property to R5. It is currently developed with a dwelling and attached garage, a carport built in 1975. It is unflatted. It has approximately 19.55 acres of land area. And it is split zoned R10 and R5. The land use designation is rural residential. And it is accessed of Blue Sky Road, which is a private road. Most of the property contains slope that are less than 15% in grade. Only a small portion of the site contains slopes that are over 30% or between 15 to 29%. It does not contain any wetlands or water body. There are no critical wildlife habitat areas as identified by any local, state, or federal agencies. Most of the site is within flood hazard zone X, which means it does not require any further flood payment review. There are two types of soils present on the property. One is not prime farmland soil, which is well-drained and is present on the majority of the site. Some portion of the site also has another type of soil, which is defined as prime farmland and well-drained. The site is served by an individual well located at the north end of the property at a depth of 300 feet, providing 300 gallons per minute. It is currently so, am I wrong? Sorry.
We'll get there.
So the site is currently served by an individual septic drain field. It has access to self-care fire and rescue. Northern Lights Utility Company, Bonner School Number 84, Bonner County Ambulance District, and Penderell Hospital District. So the current, again, I apologize for the wrong designations right here at the bottom of this line. The land use designation is rural residential and the zone on the properties are R5 and R10. So several of these agencies were notified of this zone change request, which are listed on the slide over here. I wanted to make a correction from the staff report. No comments received from Panhandle Health District. While the staff report said that comments were received from Panhandle Health District. Idaho Department of Fish and Game and Idaho Department of Lands replied with no comments. And we did not receive any public comments on the file either. Again, to reiterate, the request for the zone change is from R10 and R5 to R5. This is the zoning criteria for rural 10 zoning. It is characterized by slopes that are steeper than 30%, located within critical wildlife habitat areas as identified by federal, state, or local agencies, contains prime agricultural soils, served by a network of public and/or private roadways that generally do not meet applicable roadway standards set forth in the public roadway standards or the private road standards of Title 12 within the floodway and contains limited access to public services. The criteria for rural five zoning is that it should be designated as a rural residential land used in comprehensive plan. That is already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density and/or do not meet the criteria for R10 above. So looking at the analysis, the zone change analysis for this property, the site is designated for rural residential land uses by the comprehensive plan, which supports both R10 and R5 designations. A very small portion of the site contains slopes that are greater than 30%. That does not support R10 zoning. The site does not contain critical wildlife habitat areas as identified by any state, local, or federal agencies. It is better suited to R5 zoning. Majority of the site is served by a Blue Sky Road, a private road. This makes the site better suited to R10 zoning. This is the only reason I have stated this is because we cannot say for sure whether this road has been built to private road standards. However, it can lean either way. The site is not located within floodway and this site is better suited to R5 zoning. It has access to the following public services, which are listed on the slide over here. And we also discussed this before. It is better suited to R5 zoning. The adjacent area to the east and south is developed at a density of one dwelling unit per five acres. And this criteria alone is sufficient to establish the site suitable for R5 zoning. With that, staff concluded that the proposal is in accord with Comprehensive Plan Title 12 of Bonner County Vice Code and in accord with the Rural Residential Land Use Designation as well as rural five zoning. And with that, staff recommends approval of this request. I can take any questions at this time.
Questions for staff? Thank you. No questions. So if the applicant's representative would come forth and name an address for the record.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't get too close to him.
Yeah. You've been here before.
How's that? That looks okay. All right. My name is Dick Staples. Bonners Ferry, representing the Zetschs on this proposed rezone. I'd like to state for the record that this rezone is not on Bear Paw Road. I don't have a whole lot more to say. I think staff report was pretty conclusive. Do want to make sure it's understood that half this property is already zoned R5. And it's just the north half that we're requesting the rezone for, which really inclusive would result in not only one more residence that they could have right now. And I'm really not sure about the 300 gallons per minute.
It's a heck of a well.
That's about it.
That's a water utility. Okay, thank you. All right. So now that concludes the applicant's presentation. Anyone in the public wanting to say something about it?
George Garrig, 294 Rincon Drives, Sandpoint. Milton indicated that I wasn't able to direct staff. But I can ask you guys a question. My general question is, why don't you put up the critical habitat map for any of these properties? It seems to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the reason why you're not putting it up stems from the fact that I pointed out that it was a 2002 work product. So just going forward, are there any circumstances in which you guys would like to look at a product that's 20 years old to make your decision? Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. So that's all the names we have on the signup list anyway. Pattersons and Mr. Garrig. So I don't think there's any, well. Would you like to offer rebuttal to the comments made by the, okay. Nobody online? Okay. All right. So that will close the public testimony portion and open up for deliberation. So here we have a more familiar case in that sense of a split lot. And as we've seen many before, like this, and then the owner can apply for either zone. Well, gee, I would rather have R10 than R5, or I'd rather have R5 than R10 on the other piece. So they can, they have the availability under county code to make an application for a zone change to make a match. That's what we have here. And once again, our criteria are the descriptions in the code of R5 and R10.
Your prior argument, how did they establish 10 or 5? And how did they have split personality on one lot?
As we've said with many cases before, and as even looking at the Bear Paw, which is not this case. But you notice those are nice straight lines all the way through zoning edges. And occasionally, it doesn't follow a property line and it gets one parcel split. And it's two zones. And that, okay, if it, if it, and again, following that argument from the previous file, somebody went through and looked at this area. Now, we don't have up on the screen the zoning map. Okay. So yeah, as you see on the zoning map that's included in the staff report, there's blocks of area that are R5 and R10. So following, those appear to be section lines, which also coincide with property lines. And this one didn't. So hence, we're here. So.
Well, and it should be interesting to note that the Primag soils is on the part that's already zoned R5.
Yeah.
If you look at the map.
Not their care soils. So again, yeah, the soils issue flops around avidly.
So I mean, I agree with the analysis in the staff report going down to the list of criteria that would push it to R10. Doesn't have a lot of slopes deeper than 30%. Not a lot of Primag soils. And where they are, it's already R5 anyway. Not in a floodway. Has access to public services, I guess, if you define that as fire and so on. And the only one is, you mentioned Swadi, is the roadway, because we don't understand the design standards, but.
The thing is, for these cases, our request, we don't have a way of sending out somebody and testing those roads whether they have been actually been built according to the private road standards or not.
Yeah.
But to be honest, we would like to think that they have been, because when they are permitted during subdivisions or we require the applicant to submit us the road improvement plans, which go through the county engineer and his process of review. So.
That's for, that works for subdivision, but that may not have been the history of how that road came into be.
I agree. I agree. That is why I left it. I gave it some doubt.
So I'm comfortable that R5 meets the criteria for R5 personally.
No. Any further discussion, thoughts, whatever? We could move on to a motion.
This is Commissioner Frankenbach. I moved to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the project file ZC 0035-21, requesting a zone change from R10 to R5 on 19.55 acres of unplatted land located off Blue Sky Road in Section 30 Township 56 North, Range 2 West Boise Meridian, Idaho, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
Hey, Commissioner Frankenbach has made a motion to recommend approval of ZC 0035-21 to the Board of County Commissioners. Is there a second? We have a motion on the floor with a second to recommend approval of ZC 0035-21 to the Board of County Commissioners. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Hall in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, so that concludes our files tonight. And the chair is coming up.
You can keep the gavel, because we go to you next. So in case we get out of hand.
So our agenda, so now we have half time. I don't have it up anymore, but that's all. Oh, no, we still, we actually have the agenda item for the workshop.
Yes, we, you have a comprehensive plan review. So. Need to establish a timeline.
Yeah. So anyway, let's get into it without any further ado. Comprehensive plan. We've been slowly working on amending it, mostly by virtue of having our neighborhood committees or our sub-area committees working over the last almost five years. Sully, Samuels, Sagel, Southwest County, West County, which is the Priest River, Old Town area, and then Priest Lake. We've received four of those proposed area plans. And the Priest Lake plan is.
They contacted me today and asked that they're back and get back on the agenda.
All right. So soon we'll have them on the agenda to give their presentation with a field should be the area plan for the Priest Lake area. Just to expand on that a little bit, that leaves us with, because those plans are not all contiguous. There's gaps between. And so that's a fact. We'd have to discern, determine what to do. Either just look at the adjacent plans that people have said if we take those to be, whatever portions of those are, we feel to be valid, and bring those into the areas that are not specifically covered by the area. So one thing that I, in working with these two planners here, Chad and Swadi, we've talked about it. And what do we do? So the first, one of the first things that I had them do on a big level was to look at the four or five sub-area plans and compare them. As I attended many of those meetings, Milton has as well, a lot of the same discussions came up in the areas that, sure, the reason we did that, if you recall, we felt that number one, who better to talk about what should happen in their areas and the people who live there and own property there? Okay, so that was the premise of it. And second, that it's some uniqueness. It may be there. What's, is there something uniquely different about Sagel from Sully? About Priest River, Old Town from Priest Lake? Since they're right next to each other. Well, there are some things. But as it turned out, as Swadi put together a very nice document that lists out the elements that are in these area plans, and then discussing across the board, here's the five areas and what they said on those issues. And I don't know that it's really a surprise, but a lot of similarities. So we'll have to deal with that. The area committees at first felt that they were going to come up with something and it was going to be law. And we had to keep telling them over and over again, oh, you're making a recommendation to this body. We will consider it in the terms of updating the comprehensive plan for the county. We will then, we will discuss it. And at some point, that'll resolve to workshops, public workshops, and eventually public hearing on comprehensive plan updates. So that leaves us with, how are we going to do this? How are we going to take that giant thing? That's, I mean, an octopus only has eight legs. This one's got. That's, I mean, an octopus only has eight legs. This one's got lots, lots and lots of legs. Oh, at least, yeah, at least seventeen. And that's referring to the, the state code that says the comprehensive plan shall be made up of these seventeen elements. Now there's eighteen with the impact fee component added to it. Unless you can find a reason that they shouldn't be, or, or another one should be added, so. But, so I, I propose and I, unfortunately, I left all my paperwork at home on the table as I walked out the door today, so. I don't have it, but do we have the one, the kind of. Scenario of topics to. If you could, yeah, I don't have it and I don't, I was on a drive somewhere, but I don't know that we could bring it up. But let's get, we're going to get some paper copies, but what it is, I, I kind of, I looked at. In general, here's things that we as a commission need to do together. The very first thing I think we need to do is to look at the existing comprehensive. There's nothing in the state code or in the county code that says throw it out and put in a new. So the, and, and we're still using it. We referenced it tonight. It is our valid comprehensive plan. But how well do we know? The one thing that's, that keeps coming up, you know, and this is a good example tonight. Comprehensive plan has land use designations. Ultimately, that's what it ends up with. Land use designations resolved to a map. And the, the descriptions are in there, the designations are in there. But then on top of that, or beside that, or whatever, as a result of that, the zoning code was put in place. And the comprehensive plan, for instance, says rural residential or rural. It doesn't say rural five or rural ten, that's zoning. Or it says Ag Forest, it says Primag Forest, it says Remote Ag Forest. It doesn't say Ag Forest ten, Ag Forest twenty, or Ag Forest forty. It says Remote Ag Forest. So because it's, it doesn't, it's not meant to be that specific, the comprehensive plan isn't, it's a guide. Anyway, we need to first. First, I'm proposing the first exercise that we go through independently and then collectively. Is review each component of each component steps, reviewing the, the two thousand five comprehensive plan. There are some seventeen components that the state code requires, population, economic development, et cetera, et cetera. They're all reflected in our comprehensive plan. If you go there now, also. The comprehensive plan in word format, word document format is on the shared drive. So you can get to that and you can review it and make comments for yourself, whatever. But look at that, there's the text of each component and. I think specifically the preamble in the state code. Says it references the components and each component should come out with goals and objectives based on the findings of that component. Talking about economic development, well, what, what things are in there? But the key sentence in that preamble to getting into the duties of the planning commission. Are, if you look at the components as they relate to land use regulation or actions. That's the driving force. So as I've reviewed and some of us have reviewed the existing comp plan. There's a lot of language in the text of the components and even in the, in the goals. That have little or nothing to do with land use regulation. They're good, solid thoughts and feelings and, and, and impressions, but they, they don't. They don't, we, you don't find those, some of those goals are not reflected in the applications that people make. You know, because they're, they're just not relevant to land use regulation. So we have to deal with that. But overall, so if we, the very first thing, if we look at the comprehensive plan. Try to digest it as much as possible and then come when we can discuss it. And you can't. Because the comprehensive plan leads to the zoning code. You have to look at them together to an extent. You can look at the comprehensive plan and its goals and objectives, which are found in the implementation component. For each of the individual components. Look at that, but think forward to, well, how did this resolve in the zoning code? And obviously the zoning code must reflect what the comprehensive plan lays out as the goals. So taking that into account, that's a, that's a very large task. Not something you're going to do by the weekend. So, so that brings in calendar. Here we are going into the holidays. We also have a very full hearing agenda, schedule. I don't know, there's, there's no requirement, nobody's laying on us, uh, got to be done by January first or something like that, none of that. I've talked with two of the three commissioners from time to time and that's always the first question, when are we going to update the complaint? And I explain how complex it is and they know, they've been there too. But so they're not imposing anything. It's very interesting because the state code says. All right, under the, under the county code section titled sixty seven. It says that counties and cities must have a comprehensive plan. And it aims it at the elected officials. But then it says, however, the elected officials can put in place a planning and zoning or planning and zoning commission. Playing commissioner, playing zoning commission. Which has a responsibility for bringing up and coming up with a complaint and amending it. And making a recommendation on any plan amendment to the Board of County Commissioners who put it in place by, in this case, resolution, the complaint. So that to me says, the folks here who sit behind this table every day do not direct us how to change the plan. We look at it just like a complaint amendment comes in here, it's a map amendment. We look at it first, we didn't generate it. That's somebody, as the code says, anybody can, can put in for a complaint amendment. We look at it first and make a recommendation. They cannot do anything on the comprehensive plan until they have a recommendation from us. Period. So, you know, in the past, there's been minor missteps along those lines. And we think we've curtailed that. So you don't have the commissioners out in the public saying it's going to be this, we can't do that, we've got to do this. No. So we need to step up now and do this. So does anybody have another thought about reviewing the existing comprehensive plan?
I have a suggestion we put it off till first.
How about?
You mean.
No, I, I'm just saying. Everybody needs to, we've got the biggest thing coming up that the county's seen here in two.
Yeah.
We need to concentrate on that.
It's our primary business.
It's our primary business first and then I don't know what's in December, but.
It's still, it's full, but.
But I would think that. We really need Jeannie here to look at the calendar and what, or we have to, you know. Calendar, but I'm just saying that. We need to do our homework in the next two weeks.
Our, our hearing work.
Yes, yes.
So, so here we are November fourth, November eighteenth is. Oh, excuse me, November, well, that's the Board of County Commissioners, that's what they're doing with the land use, but here's ours.
Here's, here's our, also our hearing.
Yeah. You know, we have one more public hearing in November, then there's, there's. Two, December second and sixteenth, and December sixth and twentieth of January and so forth. I think it goes on, yeah. Right now, files are scheduled through January. And there's one on the eighteenth, that's a big one. Then there's four on December second, two on December sixteenth, so there's an opportunity. Is that a big one, the zone change?
That's Dunham or.
And then there's four on January sixth, three on January twentieth. And that's as far as the schedule goes. But so, well, how about this? Again, there's a lot to read, a lot to absorb, a lot to think about, you know, you need time to go over this, not just read it once. Because it's quite complex and the fact that you have to read the. Read the text in the component. See what that says, see if you can make some conclusions about what that says. Then go to the implementation component and find the other component. Like population that you just read and see if those goals and objectives that are written there. Reflect what came out of the text. Either way, I think some do, I think some of them don't. So let's, let's review that. That then would be the. The lead in to. Part of the lead in to change. There's a lot of old information. This is written in between two thousand and two and two thousand and five. So it's outdated. There's a lot of things that need to be addressed that we keep hearing about through hearings. And I won't get into that now because we could be here all night. So between now and. There's nothing shown in February or. Yeah, well, just haven't put the files on. Oh, there's, I, I mean, just look at the active files on the website.
But we need to snag a date before Jeannie does, right?
Well.
Workshop.
So the other question.
If we want to do a long workshop to get into it, then.
So there's, there's two ways, we could either schedule a workshop, which is our prerogative. Or on a Thursday and by definition, the second Thursday of the month is loosely. Available for workshops. Or we can say, this is important, we need to have a workshop on a different day other than a Thursday. Or other than every second, first and third Thursday, it could be the second Thursday, it could be the fourth Thursday. It could be Tuesday, it could be Monday, it could be Sunday morning at eight, you know, whatever we decide to do. Yeah, that's the other part. So after the fifteenth, which is Monday. These two, and, and I will be working on it diligently every Friday. And I, I think we haven't discussed that much, but I think, yeah, we should be every Friday. Maybe every other, but we'll work that as it, as necessary because if we've got a big work task, it's going to take two weeks, let's, let's devote the time to that, but. Otherwise, because we're strategizing all the time, how to bring this into effect, how, what's the best way? We can't be. We can't be skimpy in this. We, we've got to really hit it. Because it's our work, but then we've got to figure out how to bring in the public. We're going to look at things, but we can't, we're not going to walk into any public workshop or meeting and say. Here's what we're thinking of doing, what do you think? It's here's the topics, here's the background, here's the facts. What do you think? Let us know, have we missed in the point? Is there something that's not brought up? You know, I mean, the whole topic of the, of the wildlife corridor map. That needs to be discussed, that needs to be fully vetted as, and the soils. And hydrology and the health district issue and the fire district. So, yeah, there's, there's no end to the topics, but they're all basically there in the components of the comprehensive plan. So. So that's why you got this high paying job. Pizza every other Thursday night. No, that varies too. So, what do you think?
I, I think unless we have some first and third Thursdays that are really light calendars. I, I think we need to schedule some, some meetings for other days. So that we can really devote some quality time to it. That's, that's my opinion, having, I mean, I, I sat through for. Through three years on the Sagel Subarea Committee and. I think, I think it benefited, we benefited from having some good, good time to have some real discussion. And so it's hard to predict what the first and third Thursday schedules are going to be like. And if they're full, then.
They're going to be full.
I mean, we can have, we can, if we have some limited topic that's related to the complaint that we want to address, that's fine. But I think in general, we ought to pick some other days besides that. Yes, yes.
So would, I mean, if, okay, we're here first and third Thursdays with the second and fourth. According to calendar and vacations and holidays, would either of those, the, the third and the.
Or. Could we do it?
Another day.
On a Saturday.
And more time.
Milton has to pay time and a half or they do come time somewhere out. We would.
How would we run that if it was a Saturday?
We'd have to.
I could envision that at certain points in the process, devoting a half a day to it might be valuable. I don't, I don't, I don't know how to predict when that is, but I can see that at certain times.
I think it'll come up.
Yeah.
Cause you're warming up and then you know you're going to break it a certain time and it, and you only get in the middle part of it, but if you've got. You know, some meat time to work through it.
Yes, it's going to be very, very hard, no matter where we are in the process, to not chase rabbits all over Bonner County. Be very hard and. Yeah. Like a snowflake. I've thought about, and, and we have this availability for budget, but. Of hiring a, a, what do you call it, consultant? Well, no, not a consultant per se, but someone to. Facilitate our meetings, yes, facilitator, someone who buys into the project and is neutral, but can keep us on track. And that, they, they have value. Yeah, good ones. And I don't know at this point who that would be. According to the state code and the order and the Land Use Planning Act. We have the authority to do that, subject to budget approval by these guys in this office. So we just need to propose it and, or hiring a consultant, any, that's how we got to the committees. We had that authority to form committees. I don't know, we'd have to, we'd have to discuss that and see who the appropriate person would be. Anyway, because it's, it's more, yes, form and format, but it's more keeping track. And there are definitely have been in many meetings where the facilitator brought the group back, you know, woo, woo, stop right now, go back here. We're on this discussion, stop going over there. And they have to be a little stiff about it, but that's the way it is.
I can see that happening.
Oh, yeah. Ask Dave about the committee. It, it's just, it's so easy to do because you want to think about it all, you are, you're talking about it all, they're all relevant. But it doesn't get things done. So how about then, oh, also. Could we use one of the Fridays when necessary to have our discussion and, and. Well, you're the, you're the boss. Would everybody, just for that, either another Thursday during the month or a Friday occasionally or something? Would that be, everybody?
For me, in the weekdays, it's going to be after work, so it's going to be like.
Yeah, after work, yeah. Yes. Yeah, it's going to cut into your time. I was just anticipating something where the three of us have worked up something solid and we need to bounce it off. And I, I rely on you two to, you know, round out the discussion, so. Well, that's what I was saying, it's because he would be working on the comprehensive. Oh, yeah, no, I'm not talking about every Friday.
They need work time.
This may be once in the next six months. And we'll discuss that, if it comes up, if that need comes up, we can discuss it. No, I'm not talking about taking half of those away, working with this group. All right, so then that leaves us with. Let's say, boy, that's, that's almost two months away.
However, we could have some assignments getting up to us, me, right?
Right, so how about that? Because.
I would say through the eighteenth and then you can give us an assignment.
The first one is there, just as you have time now, just break open, it's on the, on the shared site. Break open a component at a time. But the whole document, because there's, there's even language outside of the components, there's a very nice preamble, I would say. To the comprehensive plan. It's part of it. We kind of ignore it because historically, what we've all done is just go to the implementation section, look at the goals. We kind of ignore that and there's some real vital language. We kind of ignore that, and there's some real vital language that really could have been used tonight.
Are there any hard, uh, the hard copy books left for the complaint that was made on? Maybe if we do, we can give them, sometimes it's a lot easier.
Yeah, or if somebody wants it printed out. They were printed up for the committee.
I have one, so I don't.
So there may still be.
Yes.
Yeah, we just got zoning one. But there were copies done for the committees.
The only, the only ones that don't have them should be our, our two minute.
Well, my copy just has the front page from each component. Yeah, I didn't get the whole meal deal, I got. I know, something happened back in fifteen. Uh, anyway, but it's online now and it is in the word document, so you can move stuff around.
Love your internet people.
Just don't load it back to the shared drive, that's all. I know. Yeah, we're, uh, yeah, we're, anyway, alright, so, so let's, um. I guess on the eighteenth, uh, at, at this time of discussion, I'll just quiz everybody and see how it's going. If anybody's had it, and then I'll look at it, cause I, I did come up with this list of things that need to be done, in my opinion. And so that was the first part, and then the second one was to review the sub area proposals. Cause you've now got the complaint in your head, alright, let's see what they saw in their areas that they said was different, or. We didn't test them with, we did, but they didn't do it. Um, look at the existing comp plan, figure that out first, then talk about, cause we said. If there's some of the components that are already okay in the comp plan, and you don't need to work on it in your sub area. State that and go on and talk about the components that are needed to be talked about in your suburb. Well, they kinda did that, but then they kinda did. So that'd be in my mind, that's the next thing, is to look at what has been done. And, and absolutely recognizing everybody, you know, Dave's group and the other four. It was horrendous, just a huge amount of work and discussion, and ninety-nine percent of it was valid discussion. It was good stuff, uh, regardless of which way they went, and they went down some rabbit trails like crazy, but. It was good, and, and that just shows how complex it is, so we need to do that. Then there's the other parts about looking at the land use regulation and so forth, so. Um, so.
What, what are you thinking Milton about when we might have a chance to get the Priest River guys?
Yeah, I was, I was just looking at that, I was just looking at the files on the second. So, um, AM nineteen. Do you see comments?
Thus far?
Yeah. Well, of course not, cause we're, yeah, pretty early. I just don't know, I, I, I don't know what. What these files, but there's a comp plan zone change and then a zone change, and then a modification, and then a variance.
Well, and that's not enough, I can see getting back together. Getting back together in January, really having a good discussion. So when you're looking at the comp plan, write things down that stand out to you, just take some notes. So you can come back in here in January sometime and, and really discuss it, cause we're looking for is. Is successes in what's there, continuity in what's there, and failures and, and fluff. Um, and, and old data that just plain needs to be updated. So, and there's a lot of that, a lot of that. So we don't know yet when Priest River could be.
No, I, I, I think you're gonna, unless we do an extra night, it would. It's gonna be, I mean, we can add it to that night, but again, it's gonna be. Three hours of hearing.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, I don't think that's given them enough time to do justice to what they have to tell us.
Yeah, everybody so far has taken, what, an hour or about an hour to make your presentation. So it hasn't, but it'd be nice to put them on first on the agenda for that night if it's gonna happen, especially with Priest River, cause they're coming from. Yeah.
I mean, I, I understand.
I, I barely.
Yeah. Anybody else have an hour problem?
But you'd still have a corner if I arrived late.
True, true.
Unflexible, so.
Yeah, I am too.
Might be good for them to come down at four thirty. Yeah, they could have it from, we could give them a time slot from four thirty to six.
Yeah, okay, so if you can, if that can fit. Uh, what, maybe that's on the December.
Yeah, December, uh, uh, fourth, is it? Second, yeah.
Second.
December second.
Okay, well, that's my, that's my thoughts so far. That's not all of them, but I mean, I'll tell you, just too many. Yeah.
Or open or close, and so she knows like it's hearing next, it's like I just gotta be out there right when I lock the door, you have to wrap it up. You have a couple of part timer, but we're the only manager and I.
Well, Milton, for the eighteenth. We'll have Bill Wilson.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Yeah. And one officer.
If we need, and we'll be downstairs.
I think, I think we need to request one, just to keep, keep things under control. Whether it's a sheriff or, I guess we'd have to have, PD. If someone has to be trespassed and escorted out. Okay, that's where that's at.
Alright, happy reading, everybody. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, not much to update, we're just, you know, we, we are slowing down a little bit, but not reaching halt, that's for sure. Here we are. The OPs? Yeah, we're not taking in fifty a week anymore. Taking in thirty. Anyhow, so, yeah, busy. There's a lot of folks that are gonna be living in trailers, cause their houses are. Oh, mine, we got, menace a lot of folks. Oh, we, we, we've had, we had one, one person came in and explained that, uh, the manufactured home company canceled their order. On their manufactured home.
Wow.
And then if they wanted it to reorder it, price went up. So. And so, yeah, it's a. Lots of folks that are struggling to look for a place to.
I had a customer do that, they raised his price fifty grand on the modular home.
Yep. Yep, so, um. Yeah, I, uh, we, we are looking at some code stuff, updates, um, code changes. We opened up a discussion, we, we had talked a year ago about shoreline codes. And shoreline management area, we're gonna open that back up, but, and we had quite a great discussion with staff this week on. On that topic and, um. So we're gonna, we're gonna start to put some ideas together, we'll probably put, add it to an agenda like this to talk about briefly. Um, to get some ideas and direction. We're gonna, uh. There's some updates that we need to take care of right away. That were a part of that subdivision code, one was increasing the noticing area, so we'll probably talk about that as well. In the next, why not the next meeting, but in two meetings, talk about it briefly. To get direction on, it, it confirm our direction on noticing requirements, and then we'll put together a. A text amendment to increase those noticing requirements. Um, there's a couple of other things in the code, in the subdivision code that, that we need to get amended fairly quickly because of. When we, when the board adopted just the first three sections of that code, it, it created some conflict down below that was marked for change. But didn't go through, and so we just need to clarify some of those things, not. Um, and then, uh. Yeah, and then, and then, of course, some of the things that we talked about removing, we just need to continue those discussions, so. So we're gonna be bringing some code changes here in the next, by the first of the year. Just small ones, not major, uh, the board asked us to split the subdivision code up, so we're gonna just. Look at it section by section, and even smaller than that. Just take care of some of the pressing issues that have been created, and then some of the conflicts that are in the code. Where it says provide a. Drawing and, or provide a plot map, right? There's some conflict. That's all I have.
You can have a quick, well, take public.
Well, we don't have a call the public on the agenda, it's up to you, you know, however you, uh, I don't know that you.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am, if you have a question for.
Okay, thanks, we've talked a lot about that this week. Um. There's one other that is pretty, oh, we're gonna also look at, yeah, some of the title eleven stuff pretty quickly as well, so. But that'll go to the board, it doesn't come here. Davis, for the post meeting, please.
Oh, I still got the gravel, don't I?
Meet on the eighteenth.
Okay, so it is now eight forty-nine, almost eight fifty, and we are adjourned until. The eighteenth of November two thousand twenty-one.
And we're downstairs.
First floor conference room, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.